I'm going to call to order the Monday, September ninth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Concord City Council. I will just mention that devices are available to help those who have difficulty hearing. These devices use a transmitter and headphones and allow for an individual to personally adjust the volume to their needs. A device can be obtained at the Concord TV booth in the back of the council chambers. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Brown. Here. Mayor Jimson?
Here.
Counselor Fantasy?
Excused.
Counselor Foot?
Excused.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Here.
Counselor Horn?
Here.
Counselor Keach?
Here.
Counselor Credit?
Here.
Counselor Kurtz?
Present.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Excused.
Counselor McNamara?
Here.
Counselor Schlosser?
Here.
Counselor Schultz?
Here.
Counselor Sekun?
Yeah.
And Counselor Todd?
Here.
Very good. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to approve the meetings of the, minutes rather, of the City Council meeting of August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four.
Move approval?
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Brown?
Yes, I would like to make an amendment on page twenty-three at the top. The sentence that starts, Counselor Brown noted that she is concerned that members of the committee, comma, who may be golf course members, are voting on the rates they are paying. I would like to amend the minutes to say, and it's eight hundred dollars less than surrounding golf courses. Period.
Would you repeat that, please?
Yes. On page twenty-three at the top, the sentence that starts, Counselor Brown noted that she is concerned that members of the committee, who may be golf course members, are voting on the rates they are paying, and it's eight, and I would like to amend it to say, and it's eight hundred dollars less than surrounding golf courses.
Counselor, I'm sorry, I don't think that's really relevant.
Oh, excuse me. Your Honor, I would just like to say that I believe it is because we do have member-
Is that what you said at the time?
Yes, that is exactly what I said, and actually, it's more than eight hundred, but I'll stick with what was said. You know, this is a difference, a significant hundreds of dollars difference. There are, is a member rate and a non-member rate for paddle, what's it called? Pickleball?
Pickleball.
But that's only a few dollars. This is a significant difference, and non-residents pay the same as residents, and that is a significant benefit to members. So I think that amount should be reflected.
Counselor, with respect, I think the minutes, as they were put together by the city clerk, you know, captured the essence of your point.
Your Honor, I think the, the assistant city clerk, or she did a wonderful job, but I think that this point needs to be emphasized. It was, it was, there was more of a discussion. This is eight, eight words?
Not a transcript.
No, I know. This is absolutely not a transcript, but this emphasizes that it is a significant benefit to members who are residents or non-residents, and I think that should be captured in an official document such as our minutes.
Your Honor?
Counselor Keach, if I could. I just have to say, this seems to be a recurring theme, that every month we come and you attempt to rewrite the minutes. And as the mayor pointed out, the minutes are not a verbatim transcript of what was said. If anyone wants to go back and see that, they can see that. So I, I'm just a little concerned that any one of us can come here and, as a way to create emphasis or reiterate a point we've tried to make, grandstand and try to change the minutes in a way that may be accurate, but is it necessary? And I just, I think if anyone's interested in exactly what was said, the opportunity exists.
Thank you, Counselor.
I would just like to say, this is, this is not a transcript. The conversation was far more involved, and this captures just that essence.
Counselor, do you have any other changes you would make?
That is all.
All right. I'm going to decline your attempt to make that. I think that the, the minutes are the minutes. They summarize what occurred. As Counselor Keach has indicated, anyone who wants to see exactly what was said can certainly go to YouTube and watch the videos that Concord TV very kindly provide. Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of adopting the minutes as presented, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
All right. Ayes have it. Thank you very much. This brings us to the consent calendar. I will note that items twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five on the consent calendar should have been tabled for an October fifteenth public hearing. Consequently, I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent calendar with the exception of items twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, which will be set for a public hearing at our October meeting, October fifteenth meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, Your Honor, yes, I'm just, I had intended to recuse myself from those items, so I will not be voting on the motion to move them to the next month.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it. That brings us to the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting.
Do we need to vote on the consent agenda as a-
Sorry, do we not?
We made the motion.
Yes, ma'am, Your Honor.
It was seconded by-
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we took the end of the motion. All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Because I think, sorry, she has some questions, but did we open even that comment, if there's any comment? Because it seemed like you are trying to say something on that. I know it's a consent agenda, nothing was pulled, but I just want to know.
I think, I think Counselor Brown recused what was indicated, that she was going to recuse herself on the votes of those items, those police items.
Your Honor, I was planning to recuse myself from items nineteen and twenty as well. I thought that we were just making a motion to move those three, and then we were going to vote on those.
No, the motion, the motion presented was to approve the consent calendar-
And move those.
As I, as I read it, to, to, I, to adopt the consent calendar with the exception of items twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five-
Okay.
-to be set for public hearing on October fifteenth.
I'd like to correct that I'm recusing myself from nineteen, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five.
Thank you very much. So we did take that vote. That vote was to adopt the consent calendar and move the most. I knew I wasn't going quite crazy with that. It's too early. It's only seven in the morning. What is it that Peter said? It's only nine o'clock in the morning. We can't be drunk. So in any case, that's scripture, Acts of the Apostles. Just in case people are wondering what I'm talking about. So, Madam Clerk, item twenty-nine A.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Title II Traffic Code, Chapter eighteen Parking, Article eighteen dash one, Stopping Standing in Parking. Parking prohibited at all times and designated places. Parking time is eliminated in designated places for bus and taxi cab stand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Unless anybody objects, I would like to hold a joint public hearing on items twenty-nine A and twenty-nine B. I threw myself off. So everybody can find with that? Madam Clerk, item twenty-nine B.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of ten thousand dollars in the Sidewalk, Bike Way, and Streetscape Improvements Project, CIP number seventeen, for the design of bus stop improvements on North Main Street, and authorizing use of highway reserve funds for this purpose.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Your Honor, members of the council, so I will talk about both of those items, one following the other. So on the first part, you have a short term, you have a report from Deputy City Manager for Community Development and the City Engineer. And on the first part, you have a recommended short-term relocation of the existing bus stop. The staff recommends that the bus stop be relocated to the frontage of two fourteen North Main Street, as shown on the map that's in the report, which is available to the public at home if they like to follow on the agenda. And this would be done in a temporary interim measure. To implement the approach, the aforementioned ordinances that were discussed, would need to be approved and remove the on-street parking, which is five spaces, as well as formally establish a new bus stop and terminate the bus stop at the current location. Although, this is a workable, short-term solution, interim basis, this location is not recommended as a permanent solution, as the bus stop will likely not be able to pull full into the traveling, full, out of the traveling, I'm sorry. The permanent solution would be, the staff recommends the City Council appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars to design a proper stop, complete with a pull-off, required ADA features, as well as potential pedestrian enclosure at the east side of North Main Street, generally between Court Street and two fourteen North Main Street. Said funds would be allocated to CIP seventeen, which is sidewalks, bikeways, and streetscape improvements. Staff note that this section of North Main Street is programmed to be repaved fiscal year twenty-six. The next fiscal year's budget is part of CIP seventy-eight, which is the highway paving program, and as such, the new bus stop could be constructed, constructed in conjunction with that CIP item. The staff also notes that ten thousand dollars is appropriate as part of the fiscal year twenty-five budget, the budget that you're in now, for the CIP seventeen, for the sidewalk improvements in this area, to be constructed as part of CIP seventy-eight in fiscal year twenty-six. Working with Concord Area Transit, the Engineering Services Division of the Community Development Department would hold neighborhood meetings to review and receive feedback on potential locations for the new bus stop as part of the design process. The final design and associated ordinance changes to establish a new bus stop, as well as terminate the interim stop, and the restoration of on-street parking will also be presented to City Council prior to construction. Funds to construct the bus stop would be requested as part of the fiscal year twenty-six budget.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Counselor Grady Sexton?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Manager, I see in the written report, under the background section, that it says, these reports were prepared in response to a request from Attorney Ari Pollak, and then it says, in the end, due to loitering and other nuisance behavior occurring on private property alleged associated therewith. I just wanted to make sure that we were on the same page. What I heard, as the Chair of the Public Safety Advisory Board, was that Attorney Pollak was not bringing the issue forward due to loitering and other nuisance behavior. It was due to public safety concerns with people getting hit by people who are entering and leaving the law firm. I just wanted to see if that was your understanding as well?
That was what I heard also.
Okay, so I'm not sure if that needs to be amended in terms of the report, because the complaint was not that nuisance behavior or loitering. It was that people were waiting for the bus stop and were being put in danger and in harm's way by-
We could, we could add that.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Horn?
We're talking about doing this for, at the urging of a community member. I just want to know if we spoke to two oh five to two oh six North Main, to see if they were okay with losing five parking spaces.
That would be part of the discussion, about whether or not to, to do this, about the relocation of the, of the new stop.
For, I'm talking, well, the interim stop.
The interim stop? Let me, let me ask the City Engineer and the, no, the answer's no. He's shaky. He said no.
Okay.
Counselor, excuse me, McNamara.
I'd say, imagine, I believe, when they came to speak, not only was it the safety of cars coming and coming out of their parking lot and loitering, but it was the feeling of constituents who work in that building, a business constituent building, who has people working there who don't feel safe entering, exiting. That was also part of it. It wasn't just that they were concerned about possibly someone getting hit.
That's true.
Correct?
That's true.
Counselor Brown?
Yes, I'm wondering if there have been any reports of persons being hit. You know, I know the Traffic Operations Committee reviews, and I don't believe that there were any reports. There were, are there any reports of accidents as a result of the bus stop?
Good evening, not that I'm aware of. Good evening, thank you. Not that I'm aware of.
Can I ask, Mr. Walsh? Thank you, sir. Mr. Walsh, near misses, are those reported to the police when there was an actual accident, or if it's something less than a thousand dollars in damage?
I'm, I'm not clear on what the reporting requirements are for the police department, so I can't answer that.
Great. Thank you.
Counselor Warren?
Along that same lines, is there any empirical data, like comparing any sort of safety issues with that bus stop to other bus stops in the city?
Not that I'm aware of.
Any other questions for Mr. Walsh? Counselor Brown?
Yes. Is there a bench, or a seat, or kind of a hardened site at the current bus stop that would probably protect people who are waiting for the bus stop?
No.
Follow-up?
Follow-up?
Who would pay for that, if we wanted to put a hardened site?
It would either be at a council appropriation, or Concord Area Transit, or a combination thereof. The current location is very narrow, is a, there's the back of the sidewalk, and then there is landscaping, and then a parking lot that is there. There's a very limited landscaping area between the back of the sidewalk and the parking lot that is controlled by the law firm, so there's very limited opportunity there.
Counselor Keach?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Walsh, just to refresh my memory, it seems to me, maybe over ten years ago, we paid for and installed a enclosed bus stop down here at the corner of Park and South Main Street, and the price tag, ten years ago, was, I think, in excess of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Is that roughly?
I recall managing that project. It was more than like fifteen or seventeen years ago, and it was, it was a six-figure number, a low six-figure number, and that was paid for by a grant, congestion mitigation, air quality grant, I believe, at the time, through the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, and included the bump out that has now since been replaced by the Main Street project that used to be there.
Great. I'm just trying to get a sense of cost. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Counselor Grady Sexton?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you. Is it correct to say that the current location is not, not up to ADA standards?
There's a hard surface to get onto the bus that's there. The current space is large enough for the bus to pull off. Beyond that, I, you know, I don't know if I'm prepared to answer if it's fully compliant with ADA or not. The new location, those were, the interim location, excuse me, there was some concern about making sure that there was a hard surface, for example, that's being proposed, or it's being proposed because of the large walkway that connects from the sidewalk to the back of the curb, because we need a hard surface for folks to be able to access the bus, particularly folks who might have a walking disability.
Thank you.
Counselor Credit?
Thank you, Your Honor. While you look that up, just so we can move on to the public hearing, would you also look at the one that's across the street from the Sitco and tell me if that sidewalk, at about eighteen inches wide, is ADA accessible next to a retaining wall, that you have to come down a flight of stairs in order to access?
I also suspect that that situation may have predated ADA.
Thank you.
Counselor McNamara?
The owner, Mr. Pollak, did they request it to be on the southeast corner of their lot?
So, yes, there, and there's testimony from Mr. Pollak in, in the council's packet. There was some requests that, the conversation that occurred in June, at the council meeting in June of this year, there was a request by Mr. Pollak on behalf of his law firm to move it to the southerly edge, going down towards the adjacent property. The problem with that is, going back to, we need a hard surface for people to get on and off the bus, particularly if they have a walking disability or in a wheelchair, there's a ramp. So, we, to best accommodate what Mr. Pollak was asking for, and what we believe the council's direction to us was back in June, came up with the interim solution of put it here and rely on that large walkway area for the bus to use for loading and offloading. It's a wide right-of-way through there, and then allow us to go and find a more suitable location elsewhere in the corridor, the location described by the City Manager between Court Street and approximately the law firm, and design a proper pull-off that will meet ADA, because it would be a new facility, a new pull-off altogether. So when we're constructing new- So, when we're constructing new, we do meet the requirements, and see what we can come up with, and see if we can build consensus with the neighborhood through a public outreach process about where those property owners, butters, and residents in that area feel that the most proper location would be for a bus stop with Concord Area Transit.
Thank you for that. My concern is people who are working there aren't feeling safe, and having someone break into their car isn't a comfortable feeling. Moving the interim spot to the exact front of their building, I'm not sure how much safer that will make people feel. Here's my question: If you were to move it where they asked, and they put in, took out the bush and put in a flat surface, would that meet the temporary needs for interim spot?
We could, if we put a flat, hard surface in there that met ADA. However, who do you mean by "they"?
Maybe possibly the business. I'm just asking hypothetically.
There would have to be an improvement made, and we were trying to avoid an improvement, recognizing that this is supposed to be an interim solution regardless. So, there would have to be an improvement made, somebody would have to finance that, either the city, the law firm, somebody else at Concord Area Transit. So, our goal was to try to use the existing large paved surface that's there, recognizing that hopefully this will be something that endures for approximately a year, because we anticipate the paving program as part of the fiscal '26 budget, subject to future city council appropriation, you know, normally starts, it could start as soon as next summer, it could be next fall or the following spring. So, we felt like this could be a situation that endures for approximately a year.
City manager.
I just want to point out, the city council has already voted to relocate the spot. So, we're not talking about, do we relocate it or don't relocate it? You've already had that discussion, you've already decided to relocate it. So, we're trying to come up with the best spot, and what we're recommending is based on all, everything that we can see is, there's no good solution right now, but there could be a good solution in a year from now. So, it's just how do you get from here to there? So, you've already made the decision to relocate the spot. So, we're just taking your direction based on your vote.
Okay. Any other discussion before I open for a public hearing? Or any other questions, others, sorry? All right. Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Now, open this to the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on items 29A and 29B? Mr. Schweitzer. Welcome. Good to see you.
Good evening, mayors, members of the city council, city manager, and city clerk. I'm Roy Schweitzer, and this is located about two blocks from where I live. I'm very familiar with the area, and it's a shame Mr. Pollak isn't here, because I looked at the city GIS map, and right in front of their building sidewalk is adjacent to the building, and there's a strip of grass between the road and the sidewalk. But in front of their parking lot, the sidewalk moves to be adjacent to the curve, and the strip of grass is between the parking lot and the sidewalk. But if you look at the city GIS map, that strip of grass is owned by the city and not by the law firm. So, I'm wondering if these people who are allegedly trespassing on his property are in fact sitting on city property. I mean, I've seen people there. There's a tree there. It's nice and shady to sit on that stuff under the tree. But, you know, I don't see how we can say, okay, this guy objects to people sitting on city property next to his thing, so we need to spend $10,000 to make it go away. And I'm very upset. It would seem like anytime you're taking away five parking spaces, the two businesses they're adjacent to, one is a restaurant, one is a neighborhood market, that's their only on-street parking. They may have places in the back you could possibly squeeze to, but taking away their five parking spaces without letting the parking committee have a look at this first is clearly a mistake. I find it unfortunate that the ward counselor who was on the parking committee has not bothered to contact these businesses and ask them their opinion, apparently. I don't know if that's true or not, but I haven't heard anything of this. So, I think really, we cannot take away five parking spaces from small businesses without the parking committee having a look at it first. The other thing is, city buses only run five days a week during the day, but with your ordinance, you're also taking away the parking on weekends and evenings, when that's probably one of the biggest times for those two businesses. So, at the very minimal, you should amend taking away parking to not be evenings and weekends. I don't think you should take it away at all. I think that this gentleman has far less to complain. Across the street, there's a bus stop for the bus going the other way. In that case, the people are sitting on a wall that belongs to the business, you know, according to the GIS map again. And so, I would say that theoretically should be a greater problem, if they're actually sitting on private property as compared to sitting on city property. So, I think that, you know, you're letting one guy, you know, put you into a bum's rush on stuff, and this is highly unfortunate. I have three suggestions, or you could put that stop right away instead of where you're talking about. I don't need a check for the $10,000, just take it off my taxes. One of them is move it up the street slightly to between the two traffic lights. That would put it on the far side of the entrance to the parking lot, so people walking from the parking lot to his building might not feel harassed. Right now, the way the painted lines are, that's a little bit narrow, but number one, you could move the line. Number two, remember, I read somewhere there are 11 people a day getting on that bus. How long does a person get on a bus? A minute? So, for 11 minutes a day, to have the mirror of the bus sticking out into the adjoining lane as compared to taking away five parking spaces? I mean, is that a reasonable trade-off? Let's let the bus, you know, stop there, and we have the same thing in front of Cumberland Farms if you want to go the other way. We have an area where, once again, there is not a parking space, there's not a painted shoulder, but there's an area adjacent to the lane that becomes parking spaces further along. I think you could put the bus stop there, it would not be in front of his property at all, and that would require some hardening probably. On the other hand, maybe Mr. Pollak would pay for the hardening, get it off his property entirely. And the thing is, what you really need is you don't need $10,000 to do a big study. You need what's called an origin destination study. And that is, the bus driver asks everybody who gets on this bus or who gets off it, where are you going? Where are you coming from when you're getting on the bus? And let's say that a lot of them are coming from Cumberland Farms. That's probably a reasonable choice. Putting the stop in front of Cumberland Farms, you know, that's a good decision. The other thing I might say is, I'm going to the Coalition for the Homelessness. Well, that's another, that's a third location you could put that bus stop. And the answer there is, instead of the bus stopping in the travel lane, you have the bus turn into their driveway and go around the loop and come back out. And this would require permission, but I have a feeling they would be delighted to have a bus stop in their property, and they would happily give you permission to pull through their driveway. So, here we have three better locations than the ones proposed that don't require taking away any parking spaces. So, I think you're being very silly to vote to take away parking spaces when you have better options available and when you've never sent this to the parking committee. And the last thing I'm confused about is $10,000. The way I read it is to design this, but now we're talking about, is it also to build it? I mean, $10,000 sounds like an excessive amount to do a, you know, origin destination study, you ask the bus driver to take some notes for you, and then have an engineer, you know, take advantage of where these people are actually going to decide where the bus stop is better located. Is the $10,000 supposed to include the, you know, expense of building this, or is it only for the design? It seems like an awful lot of money for that. You have a problem here. You have such a big city budget that you don't worry about little things. Little things add up. $10,000 is nearly half a year's take-home for somebody who's working $15 an hour. So, I mean, you're talking about, you know, something that may not affect high-paid folk, but it affects real people to a high extent. So, we shouldn't just go throwing this money around. We should say, okay, why can't we find a better location? Mr. Pollak could probably think some of these are better also. And why can't we not take away the parking spaces? And why can't we not spend the $10,000, do it in-house, you know, on their regular salaries? And then, when it needs to be built, it comes as part of the capital improvement program for that. We're redoing the traffic lights there. That could just be part of it. So, I think the whole thing is outrageous. We need to say no to both of these items and let the parking committee or somebody else, if you're going to take away the parking, it's got to go to the parking committee. And if you pick one of the other three locations that doesn't take away parking, then, you know, that's fairly inexpensive. And I think, you know, this is one of the least troublesome places in the city as compared to across the street where they're definitely sitting on private property all the time.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. Any questions for Mrs. Schweitzer? Thanks very much. Yes, ma'am. Eric, would you please identify yourself?
I sure will. I'm Terry Page. I'm the transportation director from the Community Action Program for Bellknap and Merrimack Counties. Thank you very much for having me up on the stage again. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk in terms of what's going on with this bus stop, since it's kind of my bus stop, so. So, major concern that I have in regards to this whole process is that we worked very closely with T-PAC and the engineers and the planners three years ago, two and a half, three years ago, to actually move the bus stop to its current location because it was a safer location than where it was located, which was down in front of the building that is currently the Coalition for the Homeless, further down on North Main Street. And the reason it's a safer location where it is now, from our perspective in terms of a traffic and travel perspective, is that my Pennacook bus, which is one of the most heavily-used buses on the routes, had to, once it left that location, directly cut across two lanes of traffic to get over into the far left to get down into Pennacook on the way down through Fisherville Road. So, that was a really dangerous maneuver for my drivers, and we had several close calls. It was really not good for anybody in terms of safety, general safety. Clipping a bus isn't a fun thing, and there's a lot more damage that usually happens to the pedestrian or the vehicle than it does to my bus, but my bus getting damaged, even if it's just a mirror coming off, means it's out of commission for a significant period of time, and it's pretty costly for me to be able to make those repairs regardless of who's at fault. So, I try to do everything I possibly can to keep both my vehicle and my drivers and my passengers safe. So, when this location came up, it seemed ideal because we could get the bus completely off the travel lane into where it currently is. It had a hardscape that we were able to deploy the lift or the ramp on so that folks who had to use mobility devices could get into the vehicle safely. And it was a space that was equidistant for where we had additional bus stops for, so folks who couldn't travel very far could get there easily. So, that's what I'm looking for in the new location, for whatever that new location is going to be. I'm clearly up to you in terms of what you're going to do with this bus stop, but I will say that I would be really, really hesitant to move backwards in terms of safety from the perspective of my vehicle and my drivers and my passengers to a location that I don't feel is as safe as the current location is. And I do understand there's some concerns in terms of the folks who were potentially using that bus stop and they're, you know, wandering around and not being where they were supposed to be to wait for the bus. And we've done some significant work with a number of different organizations in the city to get that communication message across to folks, so I feel like that could be something that's just an ongoing conversation that happens with them. And honestly, depending on where it's located, that could be something that's going to happen wherever the bus stop is located. So, I really would hope that when we look at where this new location is going to be, it has enough of the safety features, and it makes me comfortable to say, yes, my bus is going to stop there, and we're going to be able to continue to provide service to people in that area. In regards to the bus shelter idea that was thrown out a while ago, the beautiful bus shelter that's down on Main Street, the State's House Stop, we call it, was actually part of the Complete Streets Tiger Grant that was, I'm really pulling it out of my memory.
You're doing well.
Right? For the project, and most regular bus stops do not cost over $100,000. They're more in the lines of $20,000 to $30,000 potentially with site work. You're going to be up maybe in the $25,000 to $30,000, depending on what the site work is going to be. So, that was sort of an extraordinary example of a bus stop shelter. They're not typically all that grand, so I just wanted to help clarify that piece a little bit.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Questions? Councilor Keach.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ms. Page, you referenced Tiger Funds being used for that stop. However, it was built 17 years ago.
Yep.
That was well before Main Street Tiger Grants were ever thought of.
Well, I don't, I think the existing structure, it was a different structure than what is currently there, if I'm not mistaken.
That's not my recollection.
No, it's the exact structure.
You're complaining, so...
Yeah. All I know is that we weren't actually responsible for that, because we couldn't have afforded anything that expensive. So, it wasn't anything that Concord Area Transit did at that point, and normal bus stops aren't typically that expensive.
Thank you.
Councilor Brown.
Yes. Could we put something like a bench at the existing site, so it's not the hardened? Because I got the, I was under the impression that the hardened kind of shell or casing is too, there's not enough space for it. But maybe, are there some bus stops that simply have a bench for people? That would be a location for them to sit? Because I, right now, there's nowhere for people to sit, and many of them sit on the front stoop of the law firm because they don't use that door, so, but it's further away from the bus stop, so the bus may not stop for people. But if there was a bench at the bus stop, folks may stay in that area. Is something like that possible?
Anything is possible, honestly. The, truly here in the city, particularly, you have to look at the ordinances and what's available and what distance it is from the, you know, whether it's in city-owned or private-owned, and you have to get variances, and it's quite a process to get any sort of hardscape done for those kinds of projects. But, yeah, anything is possible.
Yep.
Other questions? I'm sorry, Councilor.
Our report on this interim bus stop says that the bus is wider than this spot is going to allow, and that will be, could be in the travel lane. How do you, how does that, how do you feel about that in terms of safety or...
Makes me very uncomfortable, to be honest, because it's, I'm sure all of you have been driving around in the, in the city and on our streets lately, and people are not safe drivers, particularly now. My impression, coming back from the pandemic, folks have some sort of loss of driving ability out there, and people are just not safe on the roads in terms of driving, and they get very, very, very impatient. And we regularly have close calls with the bus where they're just too patient to wait and pull around. And, you know, we've had, luckily, nothing really significant in terms of damage, but it's still damage that I have to report, and I have to pull the bus out of service to get repaired. And it could result in, you know, you have somebody who takes it upon themselves to cross in front of the bus and cross the street right there, and somebody zips around the bus, and you have a fatality at that point, because you're not going to see them trying to get, trying to get around there. So, you know, it's definitely a less safe situation to have the vehicle out into the travel lane. You know, again, I'm super happy that I've been working with the city and the engineers and the planners as all these streets are being rehabbed. They've done a fabulous job of creating the pull-outs and making all of the stops safer as we go, and bringing them all up to the ADA standards that they need to be. There's a lot of stops still in the city that aren't, but we're working on it, and we're getting there one at a time, so I would just really hate to backtrack on this one.
Any other questions? Councilor Grady Saxton.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you so much for your testimony. Do you happen to know, on average, on a weekly average, how many people are using this particular bus stop?
So, we did an on-off study for two weeks at the request, well, I wanted to see it too, just so that I knew what was going on, but at the request of T-PAC to figure out what was going on for that. And I'm sorry I didn't bring it with me, so I'm going off the top of my head, but it is in the report, I believe. And it was no more than, I think at one point, twice in the day, there were like 11 people that were on and off at this particular stop, and other than that, it was one or two here and there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilor Grady.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate you coming and talking today, and I know it's really hard, because what you do is like, you're deep in the weeds when it comes to bus stops, and us, we're just kind of looking at things on the surface, so to speak. There, as you mentioned, there's a number of bus stops throughout the city that are not compliant the way that we would want them, that we want the bus to be able to pull off into its own area for people getting on and off the bus. When we redid the Route 3 corridor from Fountain Street all the way up to Pennacook, when there were opportunities where there was higher ridership, we took that opportunity to create these pull-offs, but then there were other areas where we didn't really have that, and bus stops are placed in the middle of a grass strip. One of them that comes to mind is by Waverly Street, because we do, at the time, we had a person that was disabled using that stop, and there would never have been a pick... a person that was disabled using that stop, and there would never have been a pickup across the grassy strip. And given it's right by Waverly Street, how do they get on and off? You're picking them up at the street, is that correct?
Yeah, we moved down to where there's a place that we can actually deploy the lift or the ramp, and they can get on that way.
Yep. And this is almost the exact, yes, thank you, Your Honor. I almost stopped to say that. And this is almost the same situation, is that if the, if the stop were not directly in front of the business, at the area in front of the two stores, that there is concern about the loss of parking. In order to retain parking, that they could actually move this down to retain those parking spaces, correct? Because it would be in front of a driveway.
Well, so I would hesitate to actually have the bus stopped in front of any driveway. I mean, we do that on occasion when need be for somebody who can't access the bus at the regular stop. If you're just letting the general public on and off the bus, I would believe it would be a really bad idea to block a driveway every time we're through there to let people on and off the bus.
The 11 people.
Anybody at that point, right? I, I mean, this is a driveway that's either a private driveway or a business driveway. I would imagine as, if I was the owner of that driveway, I wouldn't be very happy about it. And I don't believe, again, you know, I just would hate to see us take a step backwards, even though it's going to be temporary, when we've got a better solution, you know, for where it currently is, and I know we've already decided to move it, but I would hate to have the new spot be worse than where we're moving it from. So, I would hope the new spot would be comparable. Would be my hope. Thank you.
Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Ms. Page, for coming out tonight and testifying. I guess I'm just trying to figure out, if we go forward with this and we spend money on the design, we have the whole outreach process, which I think is always a good thing, and probably a lot of these questions about parking and those kinds of things could be answered through that, but I'm wondering if we get to the end where we have a proposed design, and I know that Kat and you will probably be involved in that process, can you envision a scenario, though, where it just, the final outcome might just not be acceptable for you in terms of making a recommendation to accept the spot?
There's always a chance. You know, I would feel that I would be irresponsible to put the vehicle that's paid for by public dollars, you know, state and local match, in my driver and people who are riding the bus in harm's way. I would feel it would be irresponsible for me to say, yes, we're going to stop the bus there.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Brown.
Yes, I just want to point out, in our last T-PAC meeting, you were saying that ridership has increased on buses, and that's actually a good thing. We want to see more people riding the bus. It's free, which is great. We want to get cars off the road. It moves us towards our goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Do you remember the increase for ridership?
Sure. So, this year, we topped last year's record-breaking number of 106,000 rides for the Concord Service itself, and we are up to, we've increased by 8%. And again, I'm sorry, I didn't bring it up with me. I don't know what that exact number is, but we went up 8% from 106,000, so, pretty exciting, yeah. I'm really happy about that.
Other questions? Follow-up?
Yes. Were you aware in Mr. Pollak's testimony, and I don't know how often you do this when planning out sites, that he was concerned that the new, the new location would be immediately in front of their conference room? I don't know if that's something that's taken into consideration.
I haven't actually even seen the real plan for where the new stop would be yet. I know that they've talked about it, but I haven't, I haven't sat down and actually had a conversation with where that would be located, so I can't really talk to that. Thank you.
Counselor Horn.
In our June 10th meeting where we voted to send this to city staff to see if they could find another spot, Counselor Kurtz had asked that the staff speak to you specifically to get rider input information on this. Have they done that with you?
So, my understanding is that they have taken it into consideration on what that would look like, and they'll be doing the planning process, and I'll be involved as the planning process rolls out. So, they haven't actually.
Not for the interim spot.
Started the piece yet. Not really, no.
Ms. Page, thank you so much. Thank you, and also thank you for the work that you do and the.
My pleasure.
The service that you provide to our citizens. Could you help me understand how we define a travel lane?
So, for, in bus terms, you have the regular traffic lanes, so you have the, you know, lined lanes where the cars travel, the vehicles travel for regular vehicle travel. And then for us, the travel lane is where the bus would need to move from that traffic lane over to pick up customers and then move back into the traffic lane. So, it's a kind of separate lane that we lay out to be able to have the bus safely negotiate back into traffic.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Do you have a sense of how your drivers negotiate the, this current site, which we chose to move from? Every time I look at that and I see that basically when that, when the driver has loaded their passengers and they're ready to move, do you have a sense of how they negotiate the stoplights, how they negotiate any traffic coming out of either of the two driveways that are in front of it and behind it? You know, because, yeah, if you could, because it looks to me to be a very potentially dangerous.
So, the traffic light is actually beneficial for us because it stops traffic. So, it's much easier to navigate into a lane when the traffic is actually stopped.
So, you go through the stoplight?
The current stop is just before the traffic light.
Right.
So, we're traveling northbound. We stop here, the traffic light is here.
Yeah.
So, when the traffic light is, when traffic is stopped, the driver has ample opportunity to put his, her, their blinker on and be able to negotiate the pullout into traffic after the car is clear for the stoplight. And if the light is green, then they just merge in like they would any situation where it's a regular traffic lane. So, the traffic light actually helps us in that. The drivers are actually pretty excited when they found out that there's a traffic light there because it makes their job a little bit easier.
Thank you. Counselor Second.
Thank you again, Ms. Page. Let me say, I have a question because Todd asked you what will be the consequences for those who ride the bus when you don't agree with, or if something happened that where you, I don't know, where the decision has been made to put a stop sign. I know you cannot answer the question now because you don't know where that would be, but if in case a place that has been chosen, it's not what you think is safe, what the consequences will be for our community and all those that ride the bus?
So, if we don't have a stop there in that stretch, it's a pretty long walk from the next closest stop, which is Eagle Square, which is down halfway through Main Street, and then the next stop would be all the way down on North Main Street beyond the turn for 393. It's just in front of Concord Insurance, I think it is down there. So, it's a quite a long stretch for somebody to try to catch the bus if we don't have something in that area, in that particular area.
Follow-up? So, the plan is if you don't feel it's safe, you are not going to stop at all from that?
Hopefully, that's not the case. I mean, I want to provide a stop for folks, and I want to make sure that they're able to ride, so I'm going to work as hard as I can to make sure that there's a solution in place that works for everybody. But if it's a really dangerous situation, I don't feel it's appropriate for me to backtrack and puts people in danger, so.
Thank you. Because I'm just trying to understand this whole situation, because as you opened your statement, you said we already voted to move it, which is true now. Now, we are trying to look at where it's safer for our residents or for people that ride the bus.
Yep.
And my understanding that it's an entire community. My wife, when she first moved here, she rode the bus.
She should still be riding the bus.
I wish that was the case, but she doesn't, because the timing is not the same, and she used to walk from Marshalls to go all the way down to ride the bus on the other side of it. And I'm just trying to see the impact that would make to please one person because of the safety of one individual or one group, put the entire community at risk of losing a stop sign that they have to walk in the winter to go somewhere else. So, I hope that won't be the situation.
Me too.
But as people that are elected by this great community, our job is to make sure that we don't look at one, we look at the entire community and what is better for a community. And I hope the city will work with you to find what is safe. Thanks for all you do.
Counselor Kurtz.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for your time and testimony and your work in our city. You spoke about working with local organizations to try to communicate guidelines and expectations for waiting for the bus. Do you know if there's signage or if any signage or lighting or anything has been added to the area that might have an impact on loitering or folks waiting?
I know, I haven't had the luxury of being able to add anything. I do know that, you know, what on the plan of future endeavors for the service would be sort of a general bus stop improvement across, you know, as we get the better sites and we get stuff set up, then would be the time to start looking at grants and fundraising that I can do to try to get some of those amenities in place for the bus stops themselves. Having the increased ridership is a big boon for that because the more I can show that people are riding the bus, the better I look on grants to be able to get that kind of funding opportunity in place to do that. So, you know, we're pushing towards where I want that to be, and every time the city works to put a better location in place for us, that's one step closer to be able to make it all happen.
Follow-up?
Follow-up.
I apologize, I don't have a good frame of reference for what high ridership is. Is this a frequently used stop? Like, you gave us the numbers of 11 people on and off in the context of the city of Concord and our bus stops.
It's kind of middle of the road. It's, middle of the road. Throwing out the transportation poles there, sorry. We have, obviously, the highest places are the time stops like Eagle Square, State House. Down in Pennacook, we have the circles, the roundabout stop is one of the high-use areas down there. Hospital is a big generator, Walmart's a big, so, you know, the big, the big ones that you would expect are the real high-ridership ones, but the stops in between are kind of, in my mind, the important ones because those are the folks who are getting on to go to work, or those are the folks that are trying to, you know, not use their car, so they're taking the two-block walk to get to the bus stop to get on to get to someplace else. And the other points are sort of the connector points where they may be transferring from one point to another. So, I think the ridership may not be super high at that particular one, but it's, you know, for those individuals that are using it, it's probably pretty important. And we don't really have the luxury of being able to quiz everybody that gets on board in terms of where they're going. Our sense is that, you know, if you have folks coming from here, 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 and here, and then you have a large number of them that are getting off at the hospital, or a large number of them that are getting off at Walmart, it's because they're going to either work or shop or medical appointments at those locations. So, thank you.
Counselor Crider.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ms. Page, the last time we looked at this bus stop or this section, and you've pointed out that it's a pretty long walk from Eagle Square to this location, and there's nothing in between, but yet there used to be two bus stops, and we consolidated because one was too close to the Coalition and homelessness and the crosswalk and the maneuvering of the buses to get over to head up North State towards Pennacook, and so this was the selected, the in-between.
In-between, yeah.
And so, the proximity from Eagle Square is actually a result of consolidation, and that we could be looking further south, closer to Eagle Square, in order to shorten that up, but still provide opportunity for the current bus to be able to get over into the left-hand lane to make the turn up to Pennacook.
Yep.
And you'd be willing to work, I'm sorry, follow-up. I don't want to get nailed again. You'd be willing to work with city staff to look at those distances and what would be the safest if this.
As long as it's safe, yeah.
If this location didn't work out, because I don't think our council ever wanted to pick the location, I think that what we want is something that is better for all involved.
Sure.
Thank you.
Counselor.
I think my question is for the city manager, so I'm.
All right. All right, great. One quick question. Counselor Todd mentioned that he always, he feels that, you know, public interaction is always a good thing, and he and I have had very good experiences with this in terms of our narrow street study. Do you feel optimistic that the public dialogue that's part of the proposal in this, the items before us, the resolutions, would help to, you know, really create a community consensus around an appropriate and safe location for the bus stop in the long term?
I believe it would, as long as the location of the public hearings are accessible in terms of people being able to get to them, and the timing is such that they can get to them.
That's a good point. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to testify? Please identify yourself.
My name's Ian McGregor. I'm, sorry, I'm a member of Ward 7, and this is kind of a personal issue for me. And I've been going back and forth trying to figure out why it matters so much, and as Terry pointed out, we haven't heard from any riders. And I think that's a lot of issues, but I think it's primarily that to be involved and up to date on what's happening within the city council within these chambers is not a normal thing for your average citizen to know what's going on. And for people that ride the bus because they don't have any other means of transportation, they don't have a lot of free time to read the news. I say that because I grew.
That's all right. Take your time.
I grew up riding the bus in the suburb of Milwaukee that I grew up in, and was fortunate enough to have a well-functioning, well-funded public transportation system, but it's also because I'm the son of an alcoholic who could not drive. And some of the language that has been used in past discussions about this feels like a personal attack to somebody who does utilize and wants to utilize public transportation within this community. So, I want to get that off my chest, first of all, but I think, and I regret not being able to come and testify when the vote was taken to move the bus stop. But in my opinion, there are three issues at hand here. Number one is the safety. Number two is what type of city do we want to live in and promote? And number three, what's the threshold for changing an ordinance that we want to set as a community? With the issue of safety, there are two points. One being the point made by Grady Sexton and the Public Safety Committee, pedestrian danger. This bus stop is at a light-controlled intersection. I apologize, I should have mentioned before, I am a member of the Transportation Policy Advisory Committee that helped write the report that was provided to you before this. The light-controlled intersection is, it is a controlled intersection. It is not a driveway where people are able to freely come and go. You are required to have a green light or come to a complete stop to make a right-hand turn. So, of all of the driveways that are along that corridor, it's the only one that is controlled by a light. Every other driveway is an uncontrolled driveway posing a greater danger to pedestrians and people waiting for the bus. Number two, the issue of safety. Kudos to Attorney Pollak, who, while testifying to the Public Transportation Committee, did a fantastic job of making sure that we were focusing on bus riders. The issue is not on extenuating circumstances or anything else that may be going on in the lives of those people who do ride the bus. We are concerned about only people who ride the bus. And if the problem is people who ride the bus, if you are moving the bus stop to another location, you are not solving the danger that the individuals feel in the place of employment, whether it's outside of a conference room or outside of the parking lot. You are only moving the problem to another business that may or may not be a law. You are only moving the problem to another business that may or may not be a large group of land use attorneys who are aware of the intricacies of city governance, but have the ability to request city council to move a bus stop. So I think the equity conversation is in mind, too. So you were presented with the matrix that T-PAC came up with, and I think that it far and away demonstrates that this is the safest and most equitable location along that corridor for everyone involved. And it is unfortunate that the safest location is outside of a business that the individuals at that business feel unsafe, or perhaps the individuals at that business works feel unsafe. But it is the safest location, and moving the bus stop only moves the individuals that are creating the assumed safety problem. The second one is, is what kind of city do we want to live in? As Terry mentioned, if this bus stop is not deemed to be as safe as the current one, it will be removed. And I agree with Terry, this is a matter of safety. It is a, you know, a very expensive piece of public infrastructure that we would be putting at danger. It's the employees of the city and Terry's staff that would be put at danger, and it's the individuals who are riding the bus that would be put at danger. Not to mention, everybody that uses that corridor has the risk of hitting or being hit by the bus. So having it completely out of traffic is a very good thing. And the third one is the threshold for the ordinance change. It's been mentioned that there, near misses do not get reported, so pedestrian safety is very hard to judge. And for the Transportation Committee, Attorney Pollock brought forth several police reports that had been created or generated since the bus stop had been moved. While I agree that those incidences had occurred in the time since the bus stop had been moved, there was no connection between the bus stop location and those activities of criminal, criminal activities. There is no evidence to say that they are linked. It is an unfortunate circumstance. And if we want to improve the safety of the bus stop, I would encourage increased police patrols, surveillance, lighting, maybe getting rid of vegetation so there's clearer lines of sight. But moving the bus stop doesn't solve any of the safety issues that are perceived to be present at the bus stop. Also, as a city, we should be encouraging people to ride the bus, to utilize public transportation. As a member of the Transportation Committee, on a monthly basis, it is traffic, it is speeding, it is parking. Those are our bread and butter that we deal with on a regular basis. And encouraging people to use the bus solves all three of those things. It reduces the amount of drivers, it makes our streets safer. Public transportation is the lifeblood of a community. If people are unable to move around their city freely, then you can't have a functioning economy. And I want to say, there are lots of reasons that people choose not to drive. You may or may not have seen me riding around town on my bike, but it is, it's a financial decision. When we had our second kid, we needed to figure out, do we get another car? Or what solution are we going to come up with? And we found a bike that solved all of those problems. I work a mile from the house. It would not make any logical financial sense for me to get into a car every morning and drive a mile. I really wish there was a bus stop. I live near the middle school, and I took the bus to middle school for the years that I was there. And I remember in third grade, it was a field trip to be able to learn how to use the public transportation within our city. And that, to me, is a civic duty, to be able to understand the inner workings of what makes a community a community. So I would just like to finish by saying that if you are going to move the bus stop, please keep it in a similar location. The only way that I can picture making that intersection any safer for pedestrians or vehicles is to turn it into a roundabout, which would be a severely more contentious issue than the placement of this bus stop. So my, my request is please work closely with Terry, work with the city engineer, work with the policy committee, and make sure that the problems that are being, the problems that have been arisen to cause this discussion we're having are actually addressed. And I, that's the end of my notes.
Thanks so much.
Yeah.
Does everyone have any questions for Mr. McGregor? Counselor Schlosser.
Thank you, Mr. McGregor, for showing up and sharing your thoughts. So my understanding is that the proposed interim solution would, from previous testimony and from the report, would be less safe than the current, the current stop. Is that correct?
From the discussions we had at the Transportation Committee, the proposed location, which is directly outside of the office building itself, would require a removal of parking spots outside of the newly opened, it's not a liquor store, but.
The vape shop.
Vape shop, yeah. So it's a, it's a brand-new business. And you would have to remove parking to be able to allow the bus to move over. You would have the bus, there's not an 11-foot shoulder in that location, so the bus would be in traffic. And one of the areas that I, I think is, you know, planning in the future, there is across the street from the current bus stop, a development ongoing that will be a significant number of new housing units, on the plus side of 20. And that housing unit has been the subject of discussion and with regards to parking. It's a tight spot. As Mr. Twiker pointed out, Washington Street does not have a lot of parking. It is a hot commodity. And if we were to remove that parking space and take it further away from that building specifically, it creates a disincentive for individuals to take the bus in the first place. If I could wake up in the morning and walk across the street to get on a bus to go to work, that would be a lot better in January than trying to brush my car off and get warmed up and, and leave. So I, I think not only is it not as safe if you were to move it further away, but it also creates a incentive for people to drive more and not utilize the public transportation system that we've invested in.
Please, if you'll. So the city council has voted to try to respond to the public safety concerns and move the bus stop. But it sounds like at least the interim solution might be less good than the current solution. Do you think it would be feasible to do, to leave the bus stop where it is currently, do the study, do the public meetings, see what either the design professionals or the public would like, and then make, move it just once, rather than an interim and then a final, move it just once to whatever the place, the consensus is would be the best by now? Would that be a better solution in your mind?
I, I would wholeheartedly agree. In my opinion, the longer that that bus stop can remain at the controlled intersection, the better. So I, I would fully agree with you, Counselor, that leaving it there in the interim is a preferred solution than moving it twice.
Thank you. Counselor Credit.
Thank you, Your Honor. A quick follow-up to Mr. Counselor Schlosser's question here. You said that you're a member of T-PAC. Did T-PAC actually discuss this new location formally? Because I don't see it in any meeting minutes in front of us.
I, I believe there were two matrices that were presented, and in the second one that was received. So we had one that was presented when we initially discussed it, and then we heard testimony from Attorney Pollock. And in the matracy that was presented after Mr. Pollock's testimony, I believe it is there. I missed it. Karen Hill had pointed out to us and let us know that it is there, and it, it does score, I believe, the second highest. But it is still not as objectively safe based on the criteria that we used in, in T-PAC.
Thank you.
Follow-up?
I think my follow-up will be for the city manager. Thank you.
All right. So if I may, and again, thank you very much for coming and testifying and sharing your personal experience. So other than the, the current bus stop site, is there, is there another site other than the one that is being proposed that you would prefer, or that you would say would be better?
At, we, if, if the option, in short, no. Not only from a driver standpoint, as Terry mentioned, the wide shoulder to be able to pull off and get out of traffic, the, the light to be able to allow the platoon of traffic to exit the stoplight and for the bus to safely merge across three lanes of traffic to make the left-hand turn to continue down onto Fisher-Vettler or State Street. That, that, having that light there from a driver standpoint is incredibly beneficial. But also, as a user of the bus stop, I was somebody, and still am, you know, anxious, and, you know, if I'm running to the bus because I think I missed it, knowing that there's a potentially a red light that's going to buy me an extra 90 seconds to get on the bus, or knowing that the, you know, I remember sitting there playing Pokemon on Game Boy and looking up thinking I missed the bus because I was caught up in it. And then the biggest thing to me is, if you're running from, if you're running down Washington Street trying to take the bus, and that bus is not at a controlled intersection, and you're trying to run across the four lanes of traffic of North Main Street, that is infinitely more dangerous than it is trying to, you know, shout at a bus driver who's stopped, letting people on and off to get their attention, and waiting for a signalized crosswalk.
Thank you, Your Honor. So just to be clear, we voted already to move the bus stop. The question is, an interim stop? You're not in favor of the interim stop? That, that part of your testimony is clear. Would you be in favor of eliminating it altogether in the interest of safety?
No.
Thank you.
And let me follow up on that. What I was trying to ask you is, is there another site, another alternate site that you think is preferable to the one proposed?
The, the only site that I could imagine that would come close to the level of service that is provided in this site would be having it at the controlled intersection in front of Ferry Street, which provide less time for the bus to turn and require people to cross another street.
Thank you. Counselor Gray Saxon.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you so much for, for your testimony and for sharing your story as well. It was very impactful. I understand that you are not interested in the interim measure, but in terms of the journey getting to the permanent solution, do you see any value in having conversations with the community, the business owners, residents, as well as, you know, the bus riders' catch? And, you know, do, do you think that there is some merit in having a larger discount? And I understand that, you know, we have spreadsheets with colors and we, you know, you know, score things, but then there's the, the actual, you know, sort of public experience, right?
Yes.
So do you see some value?
I, that being able to share and expose individuals to the public transportation system that exists in our community is a high priority in my book. So if we can have those public meetings and expose people to the fact that we have a public transportation system, the fact that it is free, the fact that there are stops in all of these locations, and you can get from A to B without having to use your own vehicle, is fantastic. I, I have shared with Terry thoughts on having a branding campaign with CAT to be able to have a mascot and T-shirts and swag, but, you know, being, being proud of the public transportation system that I fund as a taxpayer is, is something that I think everybody should be proud of.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. McGregor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to testify on Items 29A or 29B? Seeing none? Public hearing is closed. Madam clerk, Item 29C.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Title I General Code, Chapter 13, Public Health Sanitary Food Code.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
And members of the council, the 2022 FDA Food Code is the most recent set of codes to be published by the Food Drug Administration. Food and Drug Code establishes the practical science-based guidance for mitigating risk factors known to cause foodborne illness. The adoption of the model code will assist in achieving uniform food safety standards and enhancing the efficiency and effectiveness of our inspection and enforcement protocols. Staff performed an extensive review of both the state HEP 2300, as well as changes and updates from the 2017 FDA Food Code to the 2022 FDA Food Code. Staff is proposing also revisions to the model code in Section 13-5-3, amendments to the 2001 U.S. Public Health Service FDA Food Code to be consistent with our state and local laws. There are also revisions to the 13-5-11 issuance of notice to use terminology and methodologies for violation that are consistent with the model code of our state law. The remaining revisions consist primarily of housekeeping changes and contain changes relative to homestead operations. I'd be glad to answer your questions.
Any questions for the city manager? Counselor Kurtz.
Thank you. My questions pertain to Article 13.5 regarding homestead operations. Does Concord currently have any, have an ordinance prohibiting homestead kitchen operations?
I'll ask. Brian, do you mind?
This is Brian Santiago, and being that he's here tonight, if I could give him the opportunity to, for you to meet him.
Yes, thank you so much.
Welcome.
Pleasure to meet you, sir.
So in terms of existing homestead regulations in place, allowing or not allowing homestead operations?
Concord does not have anything one way or the other currently, so I'm looking to allow it.
Follow-up?
Yes, please. So the intention of the ordinance is to create language allowing homestead operations?
Correct.
Thank you. May I ask a follow-up?
Yes, follow-up.
Have you collected any data from, well, I don't know how you would collect data from homestead operators if they're not technically allowed, but from potential homestead operators around these proposed regulations and the potential impact of those on homestead operations?
I have not collected data. However, the state of New Hampshire, under its own jurisdiction, does allow homesteading, as long as it prohibits the, what's classified as TCS foods, which are time-temperature-controlled foods, which are foods that require refrigeration to remain safe.
Excellent. In terms of the specifics, I'm looking at the regulations for homes. Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Santiago, I'd like to ask you to pull your microphone a little closer.
Thank you. Is that better?
A follow-up, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. I apologize. Thank you. I'm looking at the part of our report that is the list of regulations for homestead operations, the application requirements, labeling, food operations, inspection guidelines, prohibited process review. I just wonder, do we have a sense, or do you have a sense, sir, of costs of meeting these criteria for potential homestead operators? Or, and/or, do we have a sense of costs to the city for administering application process review, the inspections, as laid out?
So, not laid out, the City of Concord does have a $40 application, I'm sorry, $30 application fee to be administered into all applications, as well as a one-time $40 plan review fee to overall those, as well as explained in detail with the applicant.
Right, I did, sorry, may I follow up?
Follow-up.
Thank you. I did see the number that it would be, it looks like $263, a $223 application fee and a $40 plan review fee. But I'm thinking specifically of regulations around a pest, I apologize, pest control, thank you, that was the word that escaped me, a pest control plan, liability insurance, what is referred to here as a food manager, protection manager certification. Do we have a sense of those costs?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor McMurdo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Do we, this may not be for you, do we currently have a system in place for those who are homestead operators who bring things to the farmer's market? Is there a form, a fee, and rules you have to?
Not through the City of Concord, however, through other jurisdictions.
Okay.
Do you want, do you want a little bit of real history on that?
No, I don't.
Okay, okay, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Santiago? Counselor Brown.
Does this make, thank you, does this make it easier for someone, let's say they want to do a food truck for muffins or fudge? Is this easier for, does this make it easier? Is this easier for, does this make it easier for them to do that?
Not for a food truck.
Okay. What, can you follow up?
Follow up.
Could you explain why?
Well, so for a food truck, you're going to need to have the actual equipment inside the truck as well. That way, you can do preparation off-site. However, the main point will be inside the food truck, and that's when you'll actually do preparation, any refrigeration that's required. If you're actually doing a food truck, then you have to have the commercial equipment inside the actual vehicle. But if you're doing it as a homestead, then you can just have the, your residential equipment inside the household.
Thank you.
Counselor Kurtz.
Yes. So, just because I want to understand, how does the absence of an ordinance in the city of Concord prohibiting homestead operations? How does the absence of that equal no homestead operations? There's state law, DHHS has quite a lengthy policy that is available to all citizens. Why does the state law allowing for homestead operations in compliance with their laws not apply in our municipality?
The city of Concord is a self-inspecting municipality. So, as far as the way that New Hampshire is split up, is that there are 15 self-inspecting municipalities. Concord is one of those. Everyone else falls under the jurisdiction of the state of New Hampshire.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
You're welcome.
Yes. And the city council, in over the years, has never wanted to allow this type of use. Staff is saying, this would be a great use to have for this community. That's why you're, that's why it's, and Brian is leading the charge.
Certainly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions for Mr. Santiago? Thank you, Mr. Santiago.
Thank you all very much.
Nice to meet you.
You as well.
Yes.
I like your shirt, by the way.
Thank you.
Any other questions from city council before we open the public hearing? Very well. Is anyone in the audience who would like to testify on this bill? Or rather, this measure? Going back to my State House days. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing is closed. Madam City Clerk, item 29D.
It is a resolution appropriating sum of $1,140,000 as a transfer to the Community Improvement Reserve and accepting the sum of $1,140,000 in grant proceeds from the New Hampshire Department of Business and Economic Affairs.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Your Members of the Council, back in September of 2022, you authorized staff to submit an application to the New Hampshire Department of Business and Economic Affairs, what's called their Invest New Hampshire Municipal Per-Unit Grant Program. On September 11th of 2023, uh, a year, a year ago, the city council authorized us to submit a universal design waiver and supplemental funding application to the New Hampshire Department of Business Administration Affairs for the same program. Grants were awarded to the municipalities who have applied for the funds and completed the permitting process for new affordable housing developments in their communities in less than six months, and have been approved for an award based on program guidelines. So, essentially, congratulations. You've been very aggressive with creating affordable housing and the city and the state of New Hampshire is going to reward you a seven-figure number. Funds were awarded on a per-unit basis of $10,000 per affordable unit with a cap of $1 million per municipality unless a waiver, which is why we apply for the waiver, is granted based on the project's incorporation of universal design principles. The MP, what's called the MPUG, which I just explained, is a beneficiary. Grants in municipalities receiving awards have already satisfied all grant requirements at the time the award is made. Therefore, there are no ongoing grant requirements to which municipalities, the city of Concord in this case, must adhere to, and no programmatic restraints on the municipality's use of the grant funds. We're recommending the transferring of these funds so that, because you need to, right now, they're in a reserve account, temporary reserve account. City's Community Improvement Reserve to allow the city council adequate time to develop a plan on how best to allocate these funds. So, again, this is the state of New Hampshire rewarding you for being a leader in the state of New Hampshire in creating affordable housing units in, in the city. We've created a lot more than this, but this was the limit of how much funds they're willing to give us.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Counselor Brown.
This was awarded for permit, for permitting. Did all of those units that were permitted, they were built, they were constructed?
Yes, and more.
Follow up?
Follow up.
May I ask how many?
Do you recall?
It was more than the 114.
Well, yeah, we only could apply for the 114, but there's many more than that.
Awesome. Great, thank you.
Can I, yeah, I would just mention that staff, I've asked staff in October to come to us and present a report on housing, where we've been, what we're doing, and prospectively in the community. So, we're going to be receiving an overview. Counselor Brown.
Yes. I just have questions about where the dollars are, the Community Improvement Reserve. Can you talk some more about that and how it, who oversees that and how those funds would be dispersed?
Sure. The city council created that in 2016 for the purposes of, you had a lot of different disparate purposes, and we mentioned a few of these here. They're just going to be put into a reserve account, anything that, to give you the opportunity as a council to decide how you want to spend the dollars. There's no time limit, there's no, you know, you're not going to, you're not going to run out of time to, to, to spend these, and then you can just spend them on anything you want. We've looked at communities who have spent dollars like this on simply, if you picture, the dollars were really put together by the state because of communities taking on affordable housing and the costs associated with taking on affordable housing. There's obviously costs associated with that. So, some people have spent it on different, different programs or pieces of equipment or road improvements. This is an opportunity to spend it on anything you want. So, so all we're doing is putting it in an account. Council talks about where you want to spend it, and when, when you get ready to spend it, then it's up to the, fully up to the city council, the majority of the city council, to decide, because it's cash, to decide how you want to spend it.
Let me say that I have had discussions with the City Manager about trying to find a way to use this, this money, if possible, to leverage more affordable housing, and he's.
I think it's a great idea, but again, it's up to the entire city council.
So, what would happen would be, we would be coming back to the city council with a plan for how we might be able to do that. Any other questions for the City Manager? All right, hearing seeing none, I'll open this to public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify on item 29D? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed. Madam City Clerk, item 29E.
It's a resolution rescinding the appropriation of $135,000 and de-authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes in the sum of $135,000 for the fire facility renovations project, CIP number 252, appropriating the sum of $65,000 for the fiscal year 24 washer dryer sub-project, appropriating the sum of $70,000 for the fiscal year 25 manor station sewer line maintenance sub-project, and authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes in the sum of $135,000.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Your Members of the Council, Deputy Chief, would you like to come forward? Just to be here, just in case we have questions? Again, an opportunity of one of our great employees for you to be. I promise I'll, I'll, don't worry, I got it. So, Deputy Chief Folsom, thank you. So, the background of this, in fiscal year 2024, so this will be last fiscal year, the capital improvement program, we appropriated $8,000 in funds for the fire station improvements. And that was for the replacement, purchase and replacement of commercial washers and dryers, gear extractors. Moving forward on that project and modifications to natural gas, flue exhausts, mechanical vents, waste lines, under, waste, waste line. Underground plumbing will be required to ensure the installation meets the commercial dryer code requirements. Due to the code requirements, the $8,000 is not enough to do the washers and dryers in all the stations, to complete, complete installation. Now, fast forward to fiscal year 25, the fiscal year that you're in now, you appropriated $135,000 for fire, again, fire station improvements for the rehabilitation, repair of sewer lines at the Manor Central and Broadway stations. This $135,000 allows for the rehabilitation of the main underground pipelines at all three stations. However, it does not allow for the additional deficiencies found once existing pipelines exposed. So, as we've talked to folks, anything from reconstruction of interior floors, concrete, asphalt repairs associated with the excavation is going, will have to take place after the existing pipelines exposed. We want to make sure we're putting the stations back together in a good place for, for, for the firefighters to be able to use. So, preliminary reports indicate the domestic drain system and piping at the Manor Fire Station is in very poor condition and is most critically in need of repair. The $135,000 previously appropriated for this, in this fiscal year that we're in now, will not be sufficient to fund the remediation of the sewer lines of all three stations. However, it will be sufficient to mitigate the pipeline rehabilitation at the Manor Station and the installation of the commercial washer dryers throughout the station system purchased in 2024 under the CIP 252 Fire Station Improvements. So, the recommendation of staff is rescind and de-authorize the $135,000 of facility improvement-supported bonds and bonds previously appropriated as part of the fiscal year 2025 budget, appropriate the sum of $7,000 of facility improvement bonds and notes under CIP 252 for Manor Station, and appropriate $65,000 of facility improvement bonds for the washer dryer installation. It's important to note that this course of action has no fiscal impacts for the community or the CIP 252 Fire Station Improvements. Additionally, if the recommendation is approved, additional funding will be requested in fiscal year 26 to do the sewer line mitigations for the remaining two fire facilities, which you think can wait for that additional, for an additional year. So, this gets the washers and dryers done, gets the Manor Station sewer, sewer fixed, and then we'll be back in next year for the other two systems. Glad to answer your questions.
Any other questions? Counselor Brown.
Yes, Mr. City Manager, do you have any idea how much we're looking at in fiscal year 2026 to do the remedying stations? Is it approximately the same amount? We won't know until we.
It'd probably be the differential, but we'd also want to take a look at, after we do the one at Manor, what it's going to take to put the station back into a good working order. So, we'll have a better number. I don't, it's not, it's something we should be able to handle without, without much of a problem. It's just, if you're trying to make it work within the existing dollars, this would be the, the prefer, we need to get the washers and dryers done because this has to do with the gear, you know, all the issues associated with that.
Follow up?
You're anticipating it will be a similar dollar amount next year?
It could, I thi- I think it would be somewhere, somewhere in that area. Again, it would be, you know, you don't know until you're pulling things up. But, but we'll have a better, after we have, after we have the Manor experience, so to speak, we'll know, I think, what we're going to run into.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the City Manager? Thank you, Chief. I'll open this public hearing to the public. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this measure? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Madam City Clerk, item 29F.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $35,000 in the Combined Operations and Maintenance Facility Improvements Project for the development of a conceptual study of shared facilities at the Combined Operations Maintenance Facility and accepting the sum of $35,000 from the Concord School District for this purpose.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Your Members of the Council, as you may recall, the Combined Operations Maintenance Facility was built in 1989, and the Concord School District has leased a portion of the facility to house their district transportation department for about 30 years. As originally conceived, the area of the facility, currently leased by the Concord School District, was designed to house various industrial-scale workshops. Concord School District is interested in a long-term partnership with the city as evidenced by their participation in financing the recent fuel station upgrade. The department and the Concord School District feel that it is in their mutual best interest to develop a long-range conceptual plan for the shared area of the facility. The proposed, as proposed, the conceptual plan would address space allocation, equipment needs, building utilities, security, adequate separation of city and, and school district operations, and parking, anticipating a 20-year occupancy from that time it was finished. This plan will include cost estimates for any building or renovation work that, that meets these needs. We expect future work will be discussed as part of the fiscal year 26 CIP. So, in essence, this is so we can do the analysis of what we need to do to continue to work with the school district for the next 20 years. And we'd be, in this case, we'd be accepting the dollars from the school district and then proceeding, working with them to do this analysis.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Counselor Brown.
Yes. Can you, Mr. City Manager, can you tell me approximately how large is the comp? And how much space has the school district been using?
Oh, boy. Chip, you got any, got a guess on this? As you know, Chip Chesley lives up there, so. You should know, he'd make a venture guess. Good evening.
Good evening. I don't have the exact square footage of how much they use. They, they occupy about three vehicular bays that are up there. Two are used quite actively in maintaining their school buses. As Tom had mentioned, there was a place on the original plans, even pre-date me, they're that old, that was originally designed for industrial shop use. And I dare say, in the city's portfolio, I would include probably the school district as well in that. That, that area where they're housed is, is in probably the most need of renovation for its intended use. Outside of the building, we have acres of stored parking. And that's another area that we continue to almost bump into each other with, you know, vehicles moving about to site. It came to us that, as Tom had mentioned early on, the city built the comp, and then about four or five years after, we began to, I'm going to say, cohabitate with our friends at the school district. We've most recently replaced the fuel islands. You may recall that was done over two fiscal years, so it's significant investment in their paying their fair share of that fuel island because that's where they fuel their vehicles. It just came to us that it makes sense that now that we've been there for well over 30 years, that we sit down for a minute and try to figure out what we, the parties truly need. And the school district was fortunate enough to come forward with the funds to put the money on the table so we can hire some professionals to help come forward with what that plan may look like, what the cost may look like, and how those costs may be apportioned between the parties.
Follow up?
Yes. What are their, I, do you have any idea of how many buses? I know that there are buses there. What are their plans? I know that the school enrollment has been shrinking by thousands. So, I'm just curious, you know, do they need, what their interest in the space is for? Is it just for housing buses, or are they looking at having classes there? Like CRTC classes?
In our discussions to date, I haven't heard anything about CRTC classes. Again, it's, it's very early on, so I don't want to preclude that from entering the discussions, but I haven't heard anything to answer you honestly. For the most part, their space is there to house their drivers and their mechanics and the equipment they need to maintain their school bus fleet. I can't tell you precisely how many school buses are on-site. You know, we segregate our equipment from their equipment. We try to keep the traffic patterns separate so we don't bump into each other. But even in a large area, we sometimes do cross paths, and there is need for more space. I think if you come up to the comp at one time, you'll see that this thing was, was built for the Department of Public Works. The Department of Public Works is now a part of Concord General Services. So, we are cells of ground. And if you were to open the door to the foreman's offices, you would see faintly painted cafeteria where we've had a repurposed space inside the building for office space. If you go into some offices, you'll see where offices have been, had to be split in half just to staff the people that we've had. So, again, it's a, it's a facility, though, it looks brand-new because we folks have been able to give us some money to maintain it. We are running out of space, and I think in the long term, we'll be in business the next 20 years. I think the school district will be in business for the next 20 years. And I think it's in best interest of both fam, both families to sit down and try to figure out what they actually need rather than what we did in the past, which is why we kind of backed into it because we had spare space there.
If I can, you know, it's, if you go back, just even just a couple of years, if you go there at all, you'll see the groups are constantly going over each other. And we ran, when we ran into COVID, we had some real difficulties with trying to keep our operators separate from their school bus drivers because the school dress, bus drivers were essentially, as Terry will tell you, bus drivers are carriers. It's not just the people, in disease. I don't mean that in a bad way, but with COVID.
God, try to figure out what the good way is.
The good way, the good way is, we were trying to keep all, which is why we went to having our drivers actually driving by themselves, and we didn't want them crossing with bus drivers for using things like bathrooms and cafeteria space and everything else because if they got our drivers contaminated, then we couldn't plow the roads. So, we ran, we were running into all these different issues. So we ran, we were running into all these different issues with trying to reuse a space that wasn't designed for what is being used right now.
Paul.
Yes, gentlemen, is there a possibility for us to kind of do some overlap? I know over the winter, we have issues with sidewalk clearing. Is this something where we could have the school district, because there are safe routes to school, we could have the school pick up some of those jobs, I guess? Or could they use city equipment if I think they don't have any sidewalk clears, but I think we, we do? Is that something that we could do? We could kind of share that task if they're both housed at the same location?
Kaylee, I don't know if that's going to meet your goal because it's first step back, and when you think about snowplow removal, the first thing we do is take the snow on the street, we put it on the sidewalks. And then after we do that, we use our people to take the snow and then move it off the sidewalks into another location. We do work very closely with the school district. We're in contact with them every day with snow, is to letting them know what our plans are, giving them what our best read on what the roads are, so they can make the decisions they need to make regarding enrollment. I can't think of any, you know, past 15, 20 years, if there's been any criticism, you know, regarding that communication. I think it's worked flawlessly. I think we also work very closely with the school district in trying to clearly identify which of the safe walk-to-school routes are. Our informal goal at the department is by the next blue-sky afternoon, those sidewalks cleared one way or another, despite, you know, if we got people out with COVID or not. And I think we've always been able to meet that. That's what we consider to be a win. So I don't, you know, it's a good question, but I don't think you're, the, where you're going would give you the answer that we need.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Chesley? Thank you, Mr. Chesley.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
I'm going back to the comp.
Thank you. Bring, bring your measuring tape with you.
Is there any member of the public who would like to testify on this item? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Madam City Clerk, item 29G.
It is a report from the Director of Real Estate Assessments recommending the City Manager be authorized to enter into a payment-in-lie of taxes agreement between the City of Concord and Briar Hydro Associates.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Members of the council, Briar Hydro Associates owns and operates three hydroelectric generating facilities along the Kootokuk River. It's the Rolfe Canal Falls, the Pennacook Upper Falls, and the Pennacook Lower Falls. In 2007, the legislature amended the RSAs, did an acting to allow Senate Bill 99 permitting municipalities to enter into payment-in-lie of tax agreements with renewable generation facilities. The City of Concord and Briar Hydro Association would, Associates would like to have a reasonable level of assurance on the expected income for budgeting purposes for an elected payment in lieu of tax payment. The parties believe that this payment-in-lie of tax agreement will best achieve this assurance. So the pilot, or called a pilot, the pilot agreement is for two years, beginning April 1, 2024, and ending March 31, 2026. The, for tax, for the tax year '24 and for tax year '25, the pilot, pilot payments shall be $255,000 each. Just as a reminder, the one that's in place right now is $225,000, so it'll be $30,000 more guaranteed per year. And the, you have the attached agreement, but, but just so you know, because the new councils, only the city council can enter into a payment-in-lie of tax agreement, so you have that in front of you today to vote for the next two years.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Seeing none, I'll open this to the public. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify on item 29G? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing on 29G closed. This moves us to the public hearing action phase of tonight's meeting. Madam City Clerk, item 3.
It is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances specific to bus and taxi cab stations.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Seconded. Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Counsel Brown.
Yes, I serve on Transportation Policy Advisory Committee. I also serve on the Parking Committee. I, I just want to let folks know that we did have two matrices. We did study this extensively. Counselor Foote and I actually went out and walked and measured, but I think that Mr. Schweick, Mr. Schweiker made an excellent point that this should have gone to the Parking Committee. We have seen on the Parking Committee issues where we changed an ordinance, removed a sign without notifying neighbors, and it created really just antagonism within the neighborhood. I, it, you know, it was a bad policy, and I think we actually decided on the Parking Committee that before we did anything like that, we would reach out to the entire neighborhood. So I really feel, especially where we would be losing five parking spaces without giving those owners an opportunity to weigh in, that this really, we need to table this, we need to send this back to the Parking Committee to look at, to engage those community members who, you know, would all of a sudden come out and see a change to, they would lose those parking, and that may impact their livelihoods. We heard of that when we were on the Outdoor Dining Committee, where that was very contentious if there was going to be spaces lost. So, and that's also on Main Street that we heard that. So I really feel that we need to table this, and the Parking Committee needs to do the outreach to the neighbors, keep the bus stop where it is while we're doing that work.
Counsel Grady Sexton.
Thank you, Your Honor. Is it appropriate to ask the City Manager a question?
Surely.
Mr. Manager, I know that you have two phases in, in this report. I assume that the first phase was done in order to comply with the council's directive to move it, but is there, would there be any problem with removing Phase One and just going into Phase Two and keeping the bus stop where it is in the interim?
If that's, if that's what the council wants to do, no.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Counsel Horn.
I would not support the interim moving it for the parking reasons, as well as I'm really concerned about the safety part. A large portion of why we wanted to do it, or it was voted through, is because of the safety, and as Paige testified, and as the report even says, I think it's not safe to have the bus be in the travel lane in any manner, so we're not really achieving the reason that we wanted to move it.
Thank you. Counsel Creditic.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. City Manager, it's your hour. With regards to the, some of the testimony that we heard, it sounds as though after the city council made a recommendation for the city staff to come back to us with a recommendation for moving this, and it's an interim move, that this perhaps was sent back to T-PAC to review. Is that true? Did they review this a second time?
A second time?
Yes.
The, are you talking in the last meeting or the meeting before that?
No, sir. After your staff made a recommendation, did they take it to T-PAC for input?
I don't-
Counsel Brown is nodding her head yes, but, and there's a second matrix.
I think we're talking, I think we're talking different meetings.
Yeah, if, if they weighed in on again, since this was a recommendation that came back from the Public Safety Committee, should this have gone back to Public Safety?
If, if anything, if a, if a committee looked at something again, it would only be because the city council sent it to that committee. It would not, city staff would not take it to a committee unless the committee picked it up on its own and said, you know, hey, we, we have other thoughts we're going to share with city council, but we wouldn't take it to one committee without taking it to another committee, unless the council told us to do that, which I don't think they did.
I don't think so either. Thank you. Thank you.
Counsel Kurtz.
I'm okay.
All right, Counsel Brown.
Yes, no, if I may address Counsel Creditic. So we looked at, the T-PAC looked at it, and this is the first make, and we saw that, yes, it is in the safest spot. It came to council and was referred to Public Safety. Public Safety said, move it and, or referred it back to T-PAC to find a new location. We looked at, at it again, this is the second matrices, and they said, and it was determined at this location, this is the next best spot, which really isn't a, a good spot at all, which I think is what staff later determined to be correct. So we did look at that location as well, but Parking Committee did not see it at all, and, and we did not look at, at T-PAC spaces, the parking spaces that would be lost.
Any other discussion? Counsel Todd.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think I can answer Counsel Creditic's question. There's a standing item on T-PAC agendas for council updates, so matters that come before council, and so in the course of that discussion, this item came up because it was something that the council had made a decision on. So that was, any discussion was related to an update for T-PAC based on council's decision.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counsel Kurtz.
I share concerns about moving to an interim location. My vote to send this to staff was out of a desire to respond to the concerns of business owners and constituents, but certainly not a desire to sacrifice one set of constituent safety for another set of constituent safety, and I don't feel like we have a solution that achieves that. So I would like to inquire about how we make the change that, I'd like to offer an amendment that we remove Phase One of the interim relocation of the bus stop. We maintain the bus stop at its current location while pursuing the public process to determine if a safe and reasonable location exists.
Seconded. All right, moved in seconded. We have an amendment on the table, which is to bypass Phase One, which is relocate it, which we asked city staff to look at the last time.
We did.
And to leave it in the current location while the determination is made for basically going into, for, help me here, what, what are you, what are you calling for?
Phase Two, as proposed by city staff.
Right into Phase Two. All right. All right. All right, it's the discussion. Counsel Todd.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think, and I can't really call, excuse me, from, from whom the testimony came, but there was some discussion tonight also about some other possible items that could be included in this, such as looking at a bench, looking at lighting improvements, looking at perhaps trimming hedges, those kinds of things. And I'm wondering if there's a way we can also recommend that this item be referred back to an appropriate committee to, to, to look at those items as well if, if we don't have any other interim change to the bus stop while we're awaiting a final plan and design.
Counsel Creditic.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. City Manager, did General Services not remove a bench that was randomly placed at this location without the permission of the city just a few months ago?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Counsel Sloss.
So I'd just like to reference Attorney Pollak's written testimony he submitted, and, and I just want to agree with Counsel Grady Sexton that his concerns were for the safety of the people waiting near vehicular exits, so it was, that kind of safety was his main concern. He, I think representing himself and his firm, is not happy with this interim solution. They feel it should be moved even farther, so they're not happy. We heard from testimony about the impacts on the public safety of the bus, so it sounds like this interim solution, and I just want to acknowledge the work of staff, that they tried to find the best solution of-
The second best, second best solution.
Alternate, and alternate solution, and I appreciate their work. And it's a tough thing, but I think it might be best to agree with Counsel Kurtz is that just eliminate Part One, short-term interim relocation of the bus stop, and in the meantime, go to the work that will get us to a permanent solution, which is public testimony and additional design, and we can still allocate the $10,000 for that purpose so that the staff have appropriate resources to do whatever work is necessary. So that seems to make sense, and it sounds like Attorney Pollak might support that since he doesn't, and his team don't support the, the current interim solution.
Can I ask City Manager what the timeline would be moving right to Phase Two?
Well, the idea, you wouldn't be able to implement anything until the fiscal year 26 budget, so you'd do, it'd be something probably work on over the winter, winter and spring, to be, obviously, there's no rush in doing it. And that's something you'd have to consider as part of your fiscal year. We'd probably bring it to you as part of the capital budget in May of '26, I mean, I'm sorry, May '25 for the fiscal year '26, and then when you appropriate the dollars to do that corridor in there, that would be part of it. You'd already have seen what, you know, what should be there. Should it be, should it be an enclosure? Should it be a bench? How's the lighting work? Everything else associated with that. And all be part of the package. And then when we go, after, if you appropriate the dollars, depending on which you appropriate, then, you know, when the construction takes place, it would be implemented as part of the construction.
Counsel Keach.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to be voting against the amendment. As the City Manager just pointed out, the timeline to find a permanent solution is two years away. That, that's unacceptable for me. I, I think, I think we have an obligation to address the concerns that were brought before us, and I think a temporary solution, although it might not be perfect, will be an improvement, and it'll be done in a timeframe that doesn't look like two years. And two years is just, in my view, a ridiculously long amount of time to, to draw this out. So I think a temporary solution, although not perfect, is a that, just that, a temporary solution, and then we can focus and take the time, and it can go to whatever committee anyone wants it to go to and dive in deep, but I think a short-term solution is in order at this time.
A second.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think I love what the City Manager said, there is no rush in this because we all agreed that there is some input that is needed from the business and from the community, and I will support this, to keep it where it is, to do our diligence, to start it further, and to pick what is safe for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Sloss.
Oh, I was just going to comment, I agree with some of Counsel Keach's positions that this may delay things. I just want to take issue with the notion that it's, it's an improvement, it's a change, but I think it's really debatable whether moving to this interim solution, because we're trading one set of risks for another set of risks. So I think we don't have any real data on, is this a net improvement in public safety and citizen safety, of whether it's people driving or people getting on and off the bus or others. So I just want to be clear, it's not clear to me that it really is an improvement. It's definitely a change, but we're trading risks, one risk for another risk.
Can I respond, Your Honor?
Counsel, yeah, Counsel Keach.
Thank you. Just to respond to that, Counselor, you're correct, but as the old saying goes, you don't know what you don't know. So maybe there is no risk, maybe there is a risk, but we just don't know.
Thank you. Counselor Kurtz.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. City Manager. Clarification, I understand that the timeline for a permanent relocation would be the fiscal year '26. In the interim, how might we pursue the elements that Counsel Todd spoke to, looking at signage, lighting, whether or not a bench would be beneficial? Do those things all have to wait as well, or how would we pursue that?
You would, you would look at, you'd have to assign it, you'd have, you'd have to make a decision as, it's a capital, but I think it's a capital budget. I mean, if you're talking about some minor things, then maybe the Public Safety Advisor Committee and the T-PAC could, could look at it, again, those are your advisory committees, and make a determination of making these four or five things and come up with the pricing, and then we could bring back a cost estimate to you, and you could appro, but you'd have to appropriate additional dollars to do that. I was just looking at what CIP 120, if you could give me a minute, but don't, don't let me hold you up.
Yeah, let me just comment-
I'm trying to keep up with all the questions.
I would be hesitant to make capital investments when we don't know where the permanent site is going to be, because if you're talking about going into Phase Two to examine moving it, I wouldn't put any money into the current site because that's just money, you know, thrown down the toilet possibly. I would be happy to put the investment in the permanent location. Counsel, I'm sorry, Counsel Horn, I've, I think I've over, I've skipped over a couple times, please.
Um, just procedural question to whomever might answer. Is there a possibility, or what would happen if, because we seem to have had some sort of extensive studies on placement, if whomever's doing the studies say that is literally the safest place, it's the best place, the community, everybody aside from that one building all agrees and they want it there, then what do we do?
Well, if we went through that whole process and the entire community said that's where it should be, and then it probably would stay there. And, you know, with, with all that, with all the hazards that have been brought up, unless we mitigate it in some way, or, or the property owner mitigated it in some way. Counsel Todd.
Thank you. Your Honor, I agree with you in your comment about costly items, that my comments weren't in the intention to spend thousands of dollars on interim measures, but if there are low-cost items, you know, a sign, a bench, wouldn't probably be very expensive if we're talking about a couple of- expensive if we're talking about a couple hundred dollars here or there. Those being the kinds of things I would be interested in personally, just to clarify that.
Thank you. Did you find what you're looking for?
Well, yes, the, so in, again, this will be part of your capital budget discussion when you talk about the capital fiscal year '26 budget. Currently, we're proposing to about $2.4 million to reclaim and coal plane overlay these sections of road, in this case, even coal plane overlay north Main Street and north State Street areas, which includes this entire area. So I think the issue really is, is you can't make the solution that you really want to, that's going to be safe for everybody in the existing design. So you need a new design with a new construction, and that's the way you're going to come up with a permanent solution. I don't think you're going, I don't think you're going to, I'd be surprised if you have a public hearing process and somebody puts their hand up and says, yes, please put the bus stop in front of my business and take the parking spaces in front of my business, and I'll be glad to have my customers walk. That's not going to happen. You're going to have to make the decision about where it's going to go, but you want to make sure whatever it goes is going to be safe. And you're not going to have that until you actually have the improvements in place, which won't be until, at the earliest, 2025, could be, you know, the fall of '25 could be the spring of '26, because depending on when the construction takes place. So I think, you know, you could, you could have Traffic Policy Advisory Committee take a work with staff to try to see if there are temporary improvements, whether it's lighting or signage or anything else, but I don't know, I mean, I don't know what really difference that's going to make, because you're still going to be left with the same spots that you have right now.
Counselor Todd.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I was thinking, I think of what Ms. Page said when she testified, that she's been trying to work, I think, with the drivers and perhaps with the community that uses that stop in terms of education about safety, where, how to congregate safely, that kind of thing. So, yeah, I agree with the City Manager. It's hard to predict that you could come up with something, magic, something, or a bench, a magic bench that will solve the problem. But, but I'm just, I'm looking for something that could be an interim measure if we're going to be dispensing with this part of the report recommendation and just going for the full permanent recommendation. So I would be personally interested in having it sent back to T-PAC to have them just look at anything that might be possible that would be low cost that could help in the interim measure.
Then we could price that out and bring something to you, and you could make a decision about what you wanted.
Counselor Cradick.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate Counselor Todd's recommendation here. How does that prevent someone from being potentially hit or hit while entering the driveway for Gallagher, Callahan, and Gartrell when someone is sitting on their private property on the steps up to their upper level parking lot, which is exactly what Attorney Pollock spoke to, as well as people that follow his employees into that upper parking lot and follow them to their vehicle in order to help them, so to speak, to their vehicle during the winter months? How do we prevent that type of safety issue that was occurring that Mr. Pollock testified to?
I don't have a price for that.
Okay. And who would then maintain the liability now for that should something occur? Since we are aware that this bus stop that we maintain and operate in the city of Concord adjacent to this private property has safety issues involved, and we know these risks, is this still a risk that is on the firm of Gallagher, Callahan, and Gartrell, the private property owner? And as you said, who's going to raise their hand to say, ooh, move it here should something occur? You don't have to answer on that.
I don't, there is, it was a rhetorical question.
Counselor Schlosser.
I would like to say that I just wanted to take a moment to reflect upon what Mr. McGregor said about when we have these conversations. As someone who also grew up going to the bus, riding the bus in the town I grew up in, as someone who didn't own a car till I was 26, as someone who just decided to get rid of a car because we don't need two cars, I feel like the notion that somehow bus riders correlate to any public safety concern, because if that's the case, maybe we should just get rid of the bus altogether because we're creating problems with the police. I just say that, I realize I'm exaggerating, but I say that to say, unless we know for sure that there's a correlation between personal safety and bus riders, if there is, that should be addressed. I have a real, I bristle at that, and I haven't said that before, but given what Mr. McGregor said earlier, I just want to say that to characterize bus riders in that way is offensive. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brown.
Yes, thank you. I would be supporting the amendment as well as what Counselor Todd has said, and I think having something like an interim low-cost bench or even lights would alleviate people from sitting on the stoop of the law firm. I think that would be really helpful. In fact, it was, I think it was the same day that Mr. Pollock came to T-PAC, we had talked about how there, somebody had put a bench there, and we, and nobody knew where it came from or who put it, but now I'm thinking it makes sense. Probably somebody who uses the bus put it there because they wait for the bus, they use it regularly, and they set it there. So I think that we should pay attention to that because that would corral folks who are using the bus to that area, and those that are being helpful or following people, I do not think those are the bus riders. That is a completely separate issue, and this would help to delineate that.
Thank you. Any other? Counselor, second.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't know if I misunderstood your testimony here, but you did say you guys are working with the rider to make sure that they are held accountable on that regard. So there is a work being done, and this is what we need when we say public testimony. It's how can we educate those people and engage them for that purpose? So I think the work is being done now, and I second what you just said because many people take a bus and we leave just the, the mosque is there. And I will tell you, people walk in there even though the bus station is down. So people with intention to do something, it's not connected to the bus stop.
Counselor Keach.
Thank you. I just want to respond to Counselor Schultz's concerns that we, as a council, are somehow demonizing bus riders, because I don't get that sense at all. I think this is a public safety issue. It happens that the bus stop is a gathering point for not only bus riders, but other folks in the, in the population that have other intentions that are criminal, that are, do cause problems. It's not the bus riders per se. It just happens to be a gathering spot. So I think, I think that part, that point's very, very important to me.
Anybody else?
All right. I will be voting against the motion. I think that the point has been made that this is a story of conflicting safety concerns, and I think it is. I think that Ms. Page made her points about moving the bus stop to, you know, south in front of the Gallagher, Callahan, and Gartrell firm, and made her points about the use of the light and merging with traffic, and I think those are valid concerns. The unknown to me is the two driveways that this bus stop currently sits between, and the congregation of people and the traffic in and out of those driveways, and the possibility that someone is going to be hit because they're not, you know, they're, either the driver's not paying attention or the bus rider, you know, waiting for the bus, is not paying attention. That has been, all along, has been my primary concern here, is that this is, for all the other advantages that we've heard about this bus stop, it sits between two active driveways, not an inactive alley, but two active driveways going into parking lots that are being used by an active law firm. That is why I'm going to vote against this motion, although I understand and respect where it's coming from. I think that we have an opportunity to mitigate that danger and that possibility and to take an interim step during which we find a better solution that involves community conversation, that involves city committees, so that we can, you know, finally have the best possible spot for this bus stop. So for that reason, I will be voting against the motion. Madam City Clerk, I'm going to call a roll call.
Mr. Mayor, could we repeat the full motion?
Absolutely. Madam Clerk, could you repeat the motion?
Well, Counselor Cradick made the first motion to accept the ordinance.
And we have a motion to amend.
And Counselor Kurtz moved to remove Phase One, leaving the bus stop where it is in its current location, advancing to Phase Two, which would involve getting public input about the good location.
Thank you. Is that clear?
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
I'm going to start with you, Mayor Champlin.
No.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Horn?
Yes.
Counselor Keach?
No.
Counselor Cradick?
No.
Counselor Kurtz?
Yes.
Counselor McNamara?
No.
Counselor Schlosser?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Sato?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Brown?
Yes.
There are eight affirmative votes, so it is a yes.
All right, thank you. So the amendment passes. The amendment passes, and the motion now is now on the original motion amended. The vote now is on the original motion amended. Understood? You've just made a motion. The motion has been successfully amended. Now we vote on the motion, which is with the amendment. Are people clear on that?
Move to Phase Two.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
In other words, we had a motion to adopt. There was a motion to amend that, to change what it said, right, which is to leave the bus stop where it is and go to Phase Two. Now we have to vote on that because that is the amended motion.
Okay.
All right? All those in favor of the motion as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Ayes have it. All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read item 31?
Yes, it's a resolution appropriating the sum of $10,000 in the sidewalk, bikeway, and streetscape improvements project for the design of bus stop improvements on North Main Street and authorizing the use of high reserve funds for this purpose.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move to table. Until they come up with a decision.
Sir, a second.
Isn't that over this scene? Bus stop?
This is the same. This is the same. Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Counselor, Counselor Brown?
Yes, I'm wondering, is this, are these funds that we could use in the, to, in the interim, as we were discussing, lighting, place to sit while we are doing the outreach?
Counselor.
Thank you, Your Honor. To the mayor's point earlier, I think it's a mistake to spend money on a, a, a stop that probably is going to go away, so I wouldn't be in favor of spending money on anything that hasn't been decided.
Counselor Schlosser.
So my understanding is that this $10,000, we were, that the original plan from staff, which we appreciate, was to move to an interim location and then use this $10,000 for the design of a permanent solution. Do I have that, if that's the case, then I think removing the interim solution doesn't change anything about the use of these, this $10,000. This $10,000 would still be used for the design of a permanent solution that would then come forth into a recommendation for the fiscal year '26 budget so that we would have really tight design and cost information around what is, what is a proposed recommendation? And it would have community input, it would have the design thresholds, but I think they need this money to fund any design costs and that sort of thing for the final solution. So I think our amended prior resolution doesn't change the logic of this $10,000. That's my understanding.
Counselor Cradick.
Thank you, Your Honor. We don't know where the permanent solution is, and that right now, it's only public outreach to say, what's a good spot? And then at that point in time, we can say, well, this is a good spot. What do we think it'll cost? And we can reallocate those dollars at that time to determine what is the cost going to be for the permanent solution that the, that the community came up with. But there would be no reason whatsoever to spend these dollars on sidewalk improvements, lighting, bench, or anything for the current location if it's potentially not going to be the permanent location. So I don't see the use in spending the money.
Counselor Cradick.
Thank you, Your Honor. May I ask Mr. Walsh for his thoughts on this?
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening again. How may I help you?
I would just like to hear your thoughts on whether or not we should table this item and what, or what the consequences of table.
Sure. So the backup a little bit. So you've decided not to do the interim option. There is no reason to pass the last ordinance because the last ordinance was related to all the interim, all the parking changes and bus stop changes that would have to happen. So hopefully, the minutes will reflect that. The $10,000 is for design. There will be a public outreach here. We're talking about between Court Street and 214 North State Street. And as the manager pointed out earlier, that the highway program will be paving this section of roadway next, next year. And those funds, if the council approves them, who knows what the council will do in the spring, but if the council approves them, those funds will be available July 1st. And it's not unusual for General Services to move extremely quickly with the road program when they think they can. So we need dollars to design whatever we might be doing in this corridor immediately because we do not like to hold up, the community development does not like to hold up General Services when they're moving forward. And in order to do this project, it's a little more complicated than people appreciate. What we'll end up doing is somewhere between Court Street and 214 North Main, we will end up widening the road. So we're going to create a pull-off, which means we're going to modify drainage utilities in that location, potentially other utilities in that location, the curb line. And in order to design all of that, we need to go out and do survey to pick up everything, a boundary survey, that will pick up all the existing conditions that are in that corridor, which are, you know, the location of the right-of-way, which will be critical to make sure we can design something in property that we control. We don't have to do any takings, which I'm pretty confident we do. It's pretty wide through there. But we need to pick up all the utilities, everything from street poles to where the drainage actually is, to where the gas actually is, to where any other private utilities might be in there, the water, so on and so forth, the topography. So we can design this accordingly to make sure that, because when we move the curb line, because it's closed drainage, we're going to have to move, we're going to have to add drainage and modify drainage to make it all work. So there will be a public process to try to identify within that 600-foot stretch of where we're going to put this, but we need the design dollars now because once there is consensus, I don't want to lose the two months of having to come back to council once we have that consensus of where we're going to put it and potentially hold up the road program, which is something that, you know, we don't want to do.
Thank you so much.
And also, in order to be able to estimate this, so that's the other piece of it, you know, the more information we have, the better estimate we can have for the '26 budget if we can move quickly.
Thank you so much.
Counselor, second.
So my understanding is this $10,000 is critical for the process or far more the work that we need to achieve.
Yes, if we're going to do this and do it as part of the road program, and, because if we, once we pave the street, we don't cut a street for five years, so it's, it's got to be done as part of the road program.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
I can add, just remember, you can only spend the money once. So it's, and that's all we have, is $10,000 unless you want to appropriate more dollars. So that's, it's only $10,000.
Any other?
Thank you.
Discussion? Everybody good?
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
You're very welcome. Thank you. No other discussion?
Does anyone want to make a motion to accept?
I have.
That's just kind of a general question.
We can't because you made.
Yeah, you made your motion.
And there's a second, so move to vote.
So the vote is to table. It was seconded by Counselor Keach. The table is, the motion is to table item 31, which is the $10,000. If you want to table the $10,000, you don't want the $10,000 to be spent. You would vote yes. If you do want the $10,000 to be spent, you would vote no. All right? All those in favor of the motion to table, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? No?
No.
No.
Motion fails.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Motion moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it. The motion passes with the necessary two-thirds majority. Madam City Clerk, number 32.
It is an ordinance under the Code of Ordinances, general code, chapter 13, public health. Public Health, Military Food Code.
They have motion?
Move, approve.
Moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Yes, I'd like to refer this to the Ad Hoc Food Truck and Outdoor Dining Committee to give them an opportunity to look at the proposed regulations and perhaps do a little community outreach and discuss how prohibitive or encouraging this may be. I share Mr. Santiago's desire to create ordinances that allow homestead operations in the city of Concord, and I just have some concerns that without a bit of data collection from within the community, we may actually be setting ourselves up to discourage such operations rather than facilitate them.
Are you making a motion to amend?
No, I don't believe I'm amending, I'm suggesting we send it to committee. Does that, does that require an amendment?
Sounds like you want to recess the meeting. Recess, not recess the meeting, recess this item and table this item.
Table it goes. Table it, send it to committee.
And then recess, do you want to recess the public hearing? If you ask, what would we do?
Well, we had the public hearing, right?
Unless, but if you change it, then you want any additional comment.
Need to go to public hearing again, okay.
We'd second that.
Oh, hang on, we don't have a, is the proper motion to recess?
There's been a motion to approve it, and then Counselor Kurtz was talking about a referral, so.
So I didn't, I didn't make my move fast enough, is what happened. So we have to vote on the motion to approve.
You can amend it.
I can amend it.
You can amend it.
Yes, you can amend it to refer, back, to refer it to the ad hoc.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to amend, to refer this to the Ad Hoc Food Truck and Outdoor Dining Committee for the reasons previously stated.
All right, any discussion? Second? There was a second, right. Any discussion? Counselor Sekul.
I have a question here, because we said we already had this robust public hearing. If we amend it, we send it to that committee. Does it have to come back again to public hearing?
Yes.
If you, I'm not an attorney, but if you, if you change it in a significant way, substantial way, then you probably want to do it. If you make some minor changes to something, which we could run by the legal office, and it, and it doesn't arise to the fact that it's substantial change, then you don't have to have another public hearing.
So my understand, I'll follow up, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. So my understanding is that if we want just to twist the language a little to give those people an opportunity, we might not need a public hearing.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
My understanding is that what Counselor Kurtz is proposing is to refer it to the committee to get some public input, to make sure. Yeah. It is, it is going to do what we wanted it to do. Okay. All right, so, the motion before us, would you tell us what the motion is before us, Madam Clerk?
The motion, as amended, is to refer this back to the Ad Hoc Food Truck and Dining Committee. So the ordinance would not be approved, would just be re-referred back to the committee.
Right. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Ayes have it. Now, I believe we have to take a vote on the amended motion. Yes. All right, all those in favor of the motion as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Ayes have it. All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Item thirty-three.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $1,140,000 as a transfer to the Community Improvement Reserve and accepting the sum of $1,140,000 in grant proceeds from the New Hampshire Department of Business and Economic Affairs Division for this purpose.
Move, second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Aye.
Pass with the necessary two-thirds. Madam City Clerk, item number thirty-four.
It is a resolution rescinding the appropriation of $135,000, de-authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes in the sum of $135,000 for the fire facility renovations project, appropriating the sum of $65,000 for the fiscal year twenty-four washer dryer sub-project, appropriating the sum of $70,000 for the fiscal year twenty-five manor station sewer line maintenance sub-project, and authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes in the sum of $135,000.
Move, approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Ayes have it. The motion passes with the necessary two-thirds majority. Madam City Clerk, item number thirty-five.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $35,000 in the Combined Operations and Maintenance Facility Improvements Project for the development of a conceptual study of shared facilities at the Combined Operations and Maintenance Facility and accepting the sum of $35,000 from the Concord School District.
Move, approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion passes with the necessary two-thirds majority. Madam City Clerk, item number thirty-six.
A report from the Director of Real Estate Assessments recommending the city manager be authorized to enter into a payment and move taxes agreement between the city of Concord and Breyer Hydro Associates.
Move, approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Ayes have it. The motion passes. That ends the public action phase of our meeting. Under new business, during her tenure here on city council, former counselor Candace Bouchard was the city council's representative to the New Hampshire Municipal Association. And now that she is no longer on the municipal association, we need representation. Counselor Kretovic has volunteered to serve in that capacity, and also to represent us and attend the Legislative Policy Conference that's coming up on the twenty-seventh. Counselor Kretovic, would you like to speak to that?
Thanks, it was something that I was alerted to. We've had a voice at that table for decades. It's not a guaranteed voice, but at least it's something that says that we, as a community, have looked at the legislative items that are coming before our state house and our state senate. It doesn't mean that I'm actually speaking on behalf of the council, but were it be something that was important to the city of Concord, then we would at least have a voice vote. It doesn't tie us into anything, it really just allows the New Hampshire Municipal Association to hear that they are, what they are recommending is in the correct direction. And as a singular moment in time, one meeting at this point, and I've asked the mayor if I can represent on our behalf, and that requires our council allow me to do so.
Do I have a motion? So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Counselor Todd?
I just, I want to emphasize, I think this is really important to maintain this connection, and I appreciate Counselor Kretovic stepping forward to fill this role, it will be very important moving forward.
Thank you. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Ayes have it. Thank you. This brings us to comments requested by mayor and city councilors. Counselor McNamara?
Thank you. I'd like to give a big shout-out to Danielle Passick and Beth Firstamacher for planting the seeds of zinnias, cosmos, dahlias, and sunflowers next to City Hall. It just creates a colorful art scape that I know makes me happy, and everyone who walks by there is just, so thank you for that. It's something that seems by very simple, but it's great, it's huge, so thank you for that. Second thing, Concord Crisis Center of New Hampshire will be hosting their tenth anniversary annual Walk a Mile in Their Shoes. This is their biggest fundraiser of the year, and it continues to educate our community and fundraise for their support services. This event is October second, from four-thirty to six-thirty in the front of the state, front of the state house arches, Capitol arches. So you can sign up for, for a team, you can donate, or you can show up and learn more about some of our survivors who've had some great success due to the support and advocacy of the Crisis Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brown?
Yes, I would just like to talk about the multicultural festival that is happening on September twenty-second at Keach Park, from eleven to five, everyone is welcome, it costs nothing to go, there's over a hundred vendors, over twenty-five of them are food. Now, this festival has been going on for seventeen years. When it first started, it was maybe two hundred people, now it's a couple of thousand. And this is really, it's a draw to our community, but it really is a celebration of our community. I know in the school system, they talk about, I think there are over a hundred languages that are spoken in the Concord School District, and this is really an important part of being a welcoming community, is those folks that are not represented can be at Keach Park and see members of their community being celebrated. And I would encourage everyone to go to celebrate our community, it's a wonderful, fabulous event. Go hungry, because there's so much to eat and try and sample and engage with our community members. So I hope that you have a chance to attend, it's Sunday, September twenty-second.
Counselor Kurtz?
Yes, piggybacking on, I just want to add that the Concord Multicultural Festival marks the end of Welcoming Week, which is happening here in Concord, but is also part of a larger nationwide movement. Learn more about Welcoming Week and the Concord Multicultural Festival at ConcordMulticulturalFestival.org. I will be volunteering to set up early in the morning, getting my toes wet on the dewy grass, and always looking for more help, so don't hesitate to check out that website. And then finally, I just want to acknowledge that both of the Jewish High Holidays of Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur will be occurring before our city council meeting in October. Like to wish the Jewish community of Concord a Happy New Year and an easy fast, and wish you good and reflective holidays.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other? Counselor Schlosser, and then Counselor Sekul.
So I would just like to announce that tomorrow evening at seven o'clock at the West Street Ward House, there will be a Ward Seven resident meeting. We're just open to Ward Seven residents, but others are welcome to attend also. And for the first half hour, Chief Osgood will attend to speak to some resident concerns about public safety, so we're looking forward to that.
Thank you. Counselor Sekul.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to, to second what the previous counselor said about the multicultural event. I think it's a great and best place for us to learn about our rich community and the diverse culture that we have. And it's a great opportunity also to show that we are here to learn, because I think what is most important in any community, really the learning aspect of it. People tend to prejudge without knowing, and it's very important to get to know people before you judge them. And talk about rich culture, talk about learning, and I second what those counselors said for the week of welcome and multicultural day. You are available, show up, learn, meet the member of our community, our neighbors, and our great citizen. The second things I want to say here, I want to take this opportunity to say thank you to General Services, 'cause I had an opportunity to recently ask for their help, and Chip was there first day in the morning with rain to be there with other residents, and I really appreciate it. Kudos to them.
Thank you. Counselor Horn?
I will piggyback on what the other councilors have said about the multicultural festival, amazing food, my favorite part is the entertainment, it gets better every year. They do still need volunteers, you can sign up on there, find them on Facebook and whatnot. Also, Wings and Wheels is September twenty-ninth at ten a.m. up on Airport Road, that is also getting bigger and better every year.
I got you, Aunt Lee.
Who's out, who's out the airport advisory?
I would really highly recommend checking that out, especially if you have smaller children, it's such a fantastic event, kids really love it.
Counselor Kretovic?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, multicultural festival is absolutely a hit in this community, I don't want to repeat it, but do want to dismiss it either. Next month, the city council meeting is typically scheduled for the second Monday of the month, but that is Indigenous People Day, and so we will not be here, it will be on October, asterix, asterix. And, but, I did want to point out, it's gonna be on October fifteenth, which is that Tuesday. In advance of that, In-Town Concord does the first Friday event, and you guys probably saw this last week, where they had the food trucks downtown in honor of Indigenous People Day, as well as the spooky month of October. I have been asked to revise some of our Native American stories from the Abenaki cultures, the Native Americans in Canada that came in, as well as some spooky UFO, Wolverine, Bigfoot, little people, ghost story, scary stuff, and campfires, two campfire sessions in Eagle Square. So bring your marshmallows, sit down in the atrium, we're gonna have a good time, we're gonna tell some good stories, and really you'll get to learn a lot about our Native American cultures here in New Hampshire, and how they really tie to a lot of the different cultures that we have across the world, and not, and that's how our tie-in to multicultural festival is. Thank you.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Thank you, Your Honor. I also wanted to thank General Services, that Neighborhood Street paving program I think is going really well, my neck of the wood off of Mountain Road, there are some projects that look beautiful. Thank you so much, but also a reminder to folks that beautiful paved roads do not mean that you should speed on them, so.
Be safe.
Right? Thank you.
Excellent. Anyone else? Counselor Kurt, Keach?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to mention that the coffee and cars event this past Sunday was a massive success. It was a little controversial around the table as to whether it should be approved, but there were hundreds, literally hundreds of people down there, it was a beautiful day, and I received zero complaints from any other store owners, so it turns out it was a great decision, and I thank the council for their support.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, some people have already raised things that I was going to raise. I was going to mention the main event, I managed to get down there before I went to church, and it was extraordinary, there were indeed hundreds of people, you know, a number of businesses, you know, food services, coffee shops were open, as well as food trucks, and there were cars everywhere, there were cars parked next to the, next to City Hall, and I mean like classic cars, there were so many that they couldn't fit them all on Main Street and some of the side streets. It was a, it was indeed a great, great event. I also wanted to give a shout-out to the multicultural festival, my favorite part is the entertainment. I also want to give a shout-out to Jessica Livingston, who's in the audience, who has been the spark plug for that. And our Ghana and Cindy still, also, all right, and also Ghana Sharma and Cindy Chau, who work with Jessica to make this happen. It's an amazing event, I'm very pleased this year that I'm not canvassing, and so after our church, I can actually come over and enjoy all the food and the art. Last time I was there, I ended up buying a piece of artwork from my good friend, Saad Lindo, and I don't have any place more to put any, so I don't know if I can. I also would like to acknowledge Welcoming Week, it is a great way to remember, as everyone has said, the diversity of our community, I'm very, very proud, I, I mention this every, every year, that Concord was the first city, I think the first community in New Hampshire to become a welcoming city, and it was your predecessors and some of you around this council table who voted to do that. We have more work to do, but I think that was a signal start, and that was a marker that the city council placed down. I also want to acknowledge that tomorrow is Election Day, I apologize to the city clerk for not getting her out of here earlier, she will be on the job very, very early tomorrow morning. Polls open in Concord at seven a.m., and they close at seven p.m. So you, if you're a registered voter and registered with one of the two parties that are holding, that we're holding the primaries for, I urge you to get out and vote, it is your greatest honor as a citizen of this country, and as a citizen of this state, and as a citizen of this city, to exercise your right to vote. And I also would like to thank not only the city clerk and her staff, who I can tell you from personal experience, since she's canceled two meetings with me, I've been working hard getting ready for this primary election, but also the poll workers. We have the most, the greatest group of volunteer poll workers. You know, people, people can talk about, about election security and all of that, in a city like Concord, when you go to the polls, you know who the poll workers are, they're your neighbors, regardless of party, they're the people who you live with and work with every day. And I think I did great pride and great satisfaction over that. We have a great electoral system, a lot of it has to do with this lady who's sitting on my right, but also with all those people I mentioned. So, good luck tomorrow, I know you're gonna do a great job. So, good luck tomorrow. I know you're going to do a great job.
Thank you. Great citywide effort.
Amen.
Thank you, Janice. Any comments from the city manager?
City clerk said I can't say anything because our day starts at four tomorrow. In a few hours, so that's it. Nothing to add.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved and seconded.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, no?
Oh, my.